Sorry.
Merrimack TV, are you good? Okay, thanks.
Okay, welcome, everybody. This is the June twenty second. Board Commissioners Meeting. And I'm gonna call the meeting to order at five oh two. Uh, I just wanna make a statement that due to COVID nineteen and the state of emergency, the public participation will be offered by phone. Uh, you may watch the meeting via video, which can be accessed at www.mvdwater.org. As a courtesy, Merrimack TV is also recording the meeting. It will be posted on their website. Uh, you may participate in this meeting by calling uh one six four six eight seven six nine nine two three and entering meeting ID eight eight two eight three two zero two zero four nine. And all of that information I just read is on the agenda on the Merrimack, on the MVD dot, sorry, www.mvdwater.org website. So if you want that phone number and meeting ID, you can go on the website, you can have the agenda for today's meeting. And that information is all there. Uh, so we'll start the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under thy the just about liberty, justice, for all. So I just wanted to make a public, a public announcement that um if people are tuning in to watch, uh, we're gonna have a special agenda item. We're hoping to bring that on at around six o'clock PM, and that's related to the recent irrigation ban and a discussion of how that came about. So if you want to come back at around six o'clock, we should be through uh the first uh several items in our agenda, and we'll consider that then. The reason I'm doing that is because our consultant, Underwood Engineers, will be able to participate at that time. Uh, so we're gonna have them involved in that discussion as well. So that would be at around six o'clock, okay? So the first thing on our agenda um is the auditor's report. Uh, and that is by Mr. Michael Campo, the Director of Plodzik and Sanderson. Uh, so, Michael, if you're able to hear us, you have the floor.
All right, I, I can hear you. So um I did talk to Michelle earlier today to kinda go over what um my typical presentation is. I think it's been a couple of years since the last time I, I came out from Merrimack Village for a meeting. Um, I would like to start by saying thank you for allowing me to do it over Zoom. I, I shared with Michelle, I think this is my seventh meeting out of the last eleven business days. So you can tell how, how popular I must be at home with the wife. Uh, what I'd like to do is basically walk through the audit. I, I, I break it into two parts. I start with the audit. Financial is your opinion letter, and then I move on to the governance letter and recommendations we have for you. At that point, I open it up for any questions that the board may have. Um, so with that, we're gonna go right to page one of the audit. Don't waste any time. We're gonna go to, it's about a quarter from the bottom of page one, opinions. This is essentially why, why we're hired. The, the idea that we bring in an independent perspective to review the financial statements, make an assessment of the, the risk of the, the entities that we audit. Ultimately, we decide, can we include in all material respects if the financial statements are presented fairly and accurately? And I'm, I'm pleased to share with you, you did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can receive, which means that we ran into no obstacles that prevented us from rendering a clean opinion. So from there, we're gonna go to page, page five. Your statement in net position. Now, I, I understand in talking with Michelle, there, there is some question when it comes to the statement in net position, particularly in some of the liability accounts that um that sit there. And if some of them really are more fund balance that are kinda parked on the balance sheet. I, I can assure you that in our review of the, the balance sheet, we don't see any such occurrence. Um, at the end of the year, what we see is a net position primarily made up of investment in capital assets of twenty million nine hundred thirteen thousand eighty-one dollars. Majority, as I had said, was investment in capital assets of just shy of thirteen million. I'm now gonna bring you to page, page six, which is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. This just breaks down how your net position as a whole changed over the past year. And you can see the top two parts, we, we're addressing operating revenues, operating expenses, and then essentially, in your case, you have a gain, operating gain. And then we get into the next section, which represents non-operating revenue slash expense. And you've got such items as interest income, change of fair market value, net gain on sale of property, interest expense, and settlement proceeds. And you could see that over the course of the year, your net position increased by just shy of seven hundred and fifty thousand. So with that, that's the majority of the financial statements. Are there any questions related to the financial statements specifically?
Well, Michelle, we're, Swole speaking here. Um, Michelle and I had talked a little about that as far as the balance sheet. Um, we normally don't look at the balance sheet here as a board. Um, and it's something that I would like to see maybe just once a year, uh specifically a year in. I understand that you guys already had a look at that as well and didn't see anything there. I just know the balance sheet sometimes serves as a way to park things, right, uh deferred or, or, or reserved.
That's even quarterly, it's not, I, I actually do a run-through. I may not always formally pull together all the reconciliations. I may just make my notes on the balance sheet. Um, but quarterly, it would be no problem for me to just pull together backup and reconciliations for all balance sheet items. And we do keep, we do keep the balance sheet relatively clean at all times.
Yeah, I, I know we do some deferrals, right, and we do some reserves at times, right?
We have the, like, we have the unbilled accruals that we do, but, yes.
And, and one of the experience side personally have means that, for example, if you do uh manual postings for those accruals and referrals, that you sometimes possibly forget to undo them for the prior month, and then you're doubling them up, or they may even accumulate over time, which can be pretty bad, you know.
If it could be, if I could just interject real quickly. I, I can share with you, one of the things that we do from an audit perspective is we do do prior to current year analytical comparisons, and we do that on an account level basis. So anytime we see an item that doesn't change from one year to the other, it actually gets a little more skepticism than a change that's immaterial. Um, we would look at that and say, to your point, if this is a, is this like an account that just is kinda sitting dormant for year after year, um, that is something that we actually address, because even though it would be technically an immaterial, that change at zero, that in itself is unusual. Um, when you look at something like a hundred and thirty of these different financial statements for governments all over the state of New Hampshire, the number of times that a change of zero happens and it's actually accurate, very, very, very limited. So uh to your point, it, it's certainly something that when we come in and do the audit, in the event that we see something that hasn't changed, we do do additional procedures at that point.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're more on, on the monthly postings, manual postings, writing reserves and deferrals. That's more what I'm referring to, because if they're manual processes, they can be forgotten to be undone right from the prior month.
No, absolutely, and Mike, this is Michelle. I'm, I'm out of view, but I'm here. And, um, and that's what I'm seeing. As Mike and Scott both have recommended, getting a board member involved to look through the adjusting journal entries um and dig a little deeper into the financials. And I think including a review of the balance sheet quarterly would be great, because I'm one person. I have, you know, I have things set up to check that, but then checklist. And part of that is, are all the accruals reversed? And on the reversing entries, they're marked reversed, and I sign off on the reversing component as well as the posting. Mistakes do happen. So I think a second set of eyes is helpful. I'm very open to that.
And to, to follow up that point, I also, I mean, that's something Michelle and I have had conversations with or about for years now. And it's not even necessary that the person reviewing it needs to be what you would consider a financial expert. Sometimes just having questions to try to understand it is enough to, to act as a safeguard to ensure the validity of the financial statements. Because with, with all the people I work with across the state, they typically have more work than hours are available. And sometimes mistakes are made, not intentional, just, you know, sometimes something's posted incorrectly. Having a second set of eyes on it isn't a detriment to the person preparing it. It really is a safeguard to, to give them a chance to just give somebody else's eyes on it and give an opinion.
And another point, um, just towards suggestions that, that Mike and, and Scott have made is I've standardized the monthly entries. So now we have, you know, a set of six or seven entries that are just memorized, they're standard. So anything, so you're gonna see that recurrence, so that's something that you'll get more familiar with. And once the understanding is there of what they're accomplishing, there are those two view, but then anything outside of that is something, any miscellaneous adjusting entry would be something that would need a little bit more scrutiny, explanation. You know, it'd all be helpful.
Anybody have any uh questions or comments?
If, if not, I'd, I'd like to go into the um governance letter next.
Okay.
So the second document you get, it's, it's a lot smaller, just a few pages, I think with three pages. And um I, I really like this document, because it gives myself and the team a, a chance to speak to management, because we, management and governance, we typically don't get to see you during the audit. Um, and this is our opportunity to share some things that don't necessarily show on the report, but basically kinda give you, uh, these are the things we saw, we'd like you to consider. Um, so for, for us, what we found is the information technologies, policies, and procedures, this is becoming more and more important across all the entities that we deal with, because of the, the the importance that information and the IT has become to the day-to-day operation. So with this, we just say, you know, take a look at it and see how it best fits for your village district. And um I, I think it will help result in a, a stronger entity in the long run. And then with that, I open it up one more time, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm happy to field any questions you might have.
You have made some recommendations as far as disaster recovery policy or procedure, right?
That's, it was just.
Right, and um, and then the um, the balance sheet review uh by, by one of the board members, right?
Yes, that wasn't part of this, that was just something in our conversations about how to.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Should we probably?
But the IT policy, we do have IT practices, we don't, we didn't have them documented. So last year, um, when I did the run-through, I had the audit team send me their, you know, their detailed notes on that. And this Friday, I'm doing um a controls review to sort of get things underway with this year's audit. Um, so our goal is to have at least a strong draft written up.
And that would be a great step forward, and that would be enough for me to remove this comment for next year's audit.
And in practice, we actually do have solid systems compared to a lot of other municipalities that I've, that I have talked with.
No question, and, and one thing my team focuses on is documented policies that are reviewed and adopted on a, a regular basis. You have policies that, you know, everyone knows, but if somebody were to leave, or somebody can no longer come to work, you're left with a position where there's really no roadmap for the replacement. Um, and it, the con, the continuity becomes an issue. So what we're saying is document policies, document procedures. And then the other thing too is you, as the governance of the, the entity, you should all be familiar with what it is, what they say, what do they require. So we encourage them to be reviewed every three to five years as well, as a standard, good business practice. And then looking forward, we're actually starting the twenty twenty audit. We uh, we've got time scheduled with Michelle on her calendar to start some preliminary procedures on Friday, so we're looking forward to that. And uh, I do, I do quickly wanna mention that working with Michelle, she's an incredibly hard worker, um, to the point where there's sometimes I have to tell her, right, that's enough for today, Michelle.
Don't put anything else in the Dropbox.
No, nothing more today. But in, in all honesty, though, what I'm seeing across the state is that people in Michelle's position are few and far between, especially of her caliber. So what you have is really something very special in her. And I, I'd like to say the same about Jill and Ron as well. Um, it really is a pleasure to come to your district year after year. People that truly care about what they're doing and know what they're doing. And I wish I could tell you that I deal with that with every job I go to, that's not the, not the case. So um I do, I, I try to make it a point when I deal with such, such tremendous people that um the governance knows it. You don't necessarily have the opportunity to see it day-to-day. We've been there for a week and usually live there, and, and we see what they do every day. You've got some very good people, very skilled people working for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, um, thank you, Mike, very much, it's Michelle. Um, and I do have to also take ownership, though, of this year's audit was completed later than it would usually be, and that was on my part. Um, I had several, multiple medical issues last year that sort of just kept detouring things. Um, but Scott and Mike just kept circling back with me. Um, and this year, as we said, um, I'm gonna be getting the prelim, um, quick looks back up, and the AP ledger to Mike either tonight or tomorrow. We're doing internal controls uh the end of the week, and we have our, our field day, our first prelim date, uh, July twenty fourth. And then we have the audit schedule for the very beginning of September. So we are in good shape.
Mike, have you noticed any, anything as far as month-end practices that you could recommend to maybe take the heat out of those a little bit? It seems that there's still somewhat of a time crunch. And I know from, again, own experience, sometimes you can do certain things actually at the beginning of the month, knowing that they're gonna be, you know, uh, the same month to month, or at least predictable, won't be changing until the end of the month, or the following month. Is there anything that you could recommend there to, to possibly take, shorten the timeframe there?
Hey, I think one of the steps Michelle's already done is limit the number of journal entries. She's trying to standardize the month-end procedures, that makes a big difference. Um, I also would say that just the fact that they're being, that they're gonna be expected every month helps in the planning. It becomes part of the monthly activity, so it's not just something you throw in together last minute. Knowing the way that Michelle proceeds, she's gonna have this thing, it's gonna be part of her schedule. So I think that in itself, you're gonna see is gonna be very efficient. Use the information, use it. I can't tell you the number of times I go into a place and will ask, you know, when was the last time you looked at a budget to actual revenue report, or expenditure report, or, you know, your AR listing? And they say, oh, we have them, we just don't review them formally. Your agenda items, and be, make it something that you, you actually review and discuss. And I think you're gonna find there's a lot of value to be found in that exercise on a monthly basis, because you're gonna be coming from a place of knowledge at all times. But in terms of, I mean, unfortunately for Michelle, the biggest thing is it, it's time. Um, she can make things more efficient, which I know she will. She knows that we're available if she ever asks questions and wants to kinda run by somebody. Myself and other members of my team are always available. But um, at the end of the day, it, it is time. So I mean, that's, that's something to consider, that I, I know that Michelle's not somebody who typically sits around the office, um, twiddling their thumbs. She's, she's usually very busy, so there, there's gonna be some time management elements of this for her as well.
Thank you.
I think sometimes it's, it's competing tasks and priorities, where I still do a lot of other, other things that their timing also falls. Um, you know, either we, you know, weekly or, or at the beginning of the month. So our goal has been, as much as possible, to um keep streamlining other processes that I do, that Shelley does, or Amy does, so that we can kind of shift the work around and free up more time during the period where we have the crunch to month-end or other tasks that we have. Still, it's a work in progress still.
Anything uh more you want to uh present to us at this point?
I, I think that's all I have for you.
Okay. Anybody have any um questions for Mike? Anything else? Okay. All right, all set with us? Good? So I guess if uh no one has any questions for you, Mike, if you don't have any last words for us, then um thanks for, for your time and um your involvement with us. I guess that's uh, you can have the rest of the night off.
I appreciate it. Thank you all, I do appreciate being able to speak to, to the boards. It, it's, you know, I think it's an important part of the audit, and I'm glad you guys were able to have it, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great.
All right, you have one. Thank you all.
Yeah, take care, Mike.
Bye, bye.
All right. Should be, are these actual items then, the disaster recovery policy and the data?
The, the disaster recovery is tied in with, it's all part of the um IT technology, policies, and procedures. So um by this audit, um, beginning of September, they want a, our full written draft, at the very least, for this, to be an item that's moved forward. Um, policies and procedures in general, they would like to see it on every function that we do. The AP process, the AR process, the bank rate process, et cetera. Um, those have been evolving as far as how we even do them. Um, but at this point, the bigger items, um, or the bigger areas do at least have, even they said if it's just simply a, starts out with an outline, at least we have that. Just so that when I win the lottery, and I can only be here for a little while to help with the transition, that you'll have a guide to go full aboard. So um, the, as I said, the IT from last year, um, I have what was written up by the auditors in our conversation. I asked them to send it to me. Um, I've made notes on changes that we've made. Um, also, something that came about more so this year was additional remote work. So that's something that definitely should be, be tied in. But mainly, it's um documenting what we do. I mean, we do have a good process, we do daily backups, we back up to the cloud. I, I check it multiple times a week from my workstation, and I touch base with Second Source if there's anything that I question. Um.
When, when you guys work remotely, do you VPN into the office and work locally with the data? Or do you, do you pull copies to your local machine and?
No, we are working totally. Um, uh, the current platform we're moving to is remote PC. So we have been uh using um GoToMyPC. Um, Sketa currently uses login, decided we were gonna leave that B, because that's just a little bit more involved, and that's working for them. Um, but as far as the rest of us, um, GoToMyPC was coming up for expiration. Dick from Second Source recommended Remote PC. And so uh Shelley had sort of given that the test run. Um, and Amy has also tried it. I've used it before, so we're just all gonna move over to that one, one platform. But we're gonna just document the expectations of virus protection that people are gonna have on their own computers, the access, who has access to their computers, because there's still a way that they can have access potentially to our information. Um, and even though it's public, we still want to protect it.
Yeah, that's actually a big point. Um, are we doing any, any safety training for like, for like uh phishing and, and, and not just phishing emails or things, but I, I know of cases where um spoofed email addresses are being used by Ron for, somebody acting as Ron, sending you an email, hey, can you send me the W two's of all my, all of our employees? And you, you actually, you know, and usually it's, it's connected with some sense of urgency, I need this right away for the audit or something like that, right? You panic because it's boss calling and asking for it, so you just take it all and send the PDFs, and all of a sudden we have, you know, shared all the social security numbers. And that's not even like a virus or file, nothing could prevent this. This is, this is a physical interaction of an individual that sends this out based on a spoofed email, because you only look at the alliance, right, and, and really it's much required.
Or wire transfers.
Right, right, so.
You know, this has a wire transfer has to go through, is it urgent, yes.
And since we're handing, you know, confidential, not, we're handing personal data of a lot of people here, it's on this. Well, this kind of training could be maybe something we should look into.
Uh, presently for our, yes, we definitely can. And Primex, uh, currently what they've been doing is they forward us both Primex and T-Bank, um, as well as our four fifty-seven uh plan and New Hampshire Retirement. All four of those entities regularly will send us memos describing from the phishing scam to sometimes there'll be an entire elaborate email that looks like it's from years ago. Um, I actually received one that looked like it was from our payroll tax. Uh, processing from the EFTPS for our payroll taxes, and it looked very, very authentic. Um, and just subtle changes in either the website or address, or if you hover, you can, you know, um, see the details. So I share those with everyone. Um, as far as formal training, I'm sure that if they don't have it, I would think Primex.
I'm sure Primex has something.
Has it coming together, especially with the remote work that has been going on um since everything's happened this year.
And Primex being our insurance company for the public, right?
Yes.
So what's the remedy to that? Is there reply, you know, reply to the email, obviously, you can wanna call or send a separate email to the person?
No, we always have, um, the general rule is always, if you are not expecting something or familiar, you know, with the source, never click on a link, uh, never open an attachment. And when in doubt, in the least, because there are a few vendors that send us emails, and I told them this, they look like scams. I really don't, I know, because I've called you, that they're fine, but every time I get them, like, that does not wanna open your attachment. Um, you know, they have a couple of them, or a few of them have not changed. Um, so that's consistently something that's everyone's reminded of, just the standard handling of things. And when in doubt, call me. You know, if I'm not around, check in with Joe, um, Dick from Second Source, he's always available. Um, but I think that standard training, um, and even just like the um sexual harassment, or general harassment that it's now expanded to um annually would be something that would be helpful, because there's always people out there figuring out a new way is really the issue.
Yeah. When you work from home, do you use your own computer, or do you bring your computer from, from here, like a laptop from here to your house?
We, we were using, um, there were three of us, we used our own laptops, but we remoted in. And we basically were brought to our virtual laptop with access to our files, but they could not cross over the platform to your personal computer. We could just work on them and view them through the desktop connection.
I always as curious, I mean, I mean, laptops are not too expensive, especially in this day and age where more people work at home. I know, you know, my wife works for STEM, she has her own new computer laptop. You know, then you can bring it in, then bring, you can bring it in, bring it to IT and make sure it's updated to, you know, at this, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think going forward, I think considering laptops with docking stations as our computer would, would be a
Something we're gonna look, we're gonna look.
An alternative again to.
You know, as with this whole COVID, we're gonna, once it's all kinda, things start to get back to stock again, we're gonna look at cameras and kinda gear up to actually, to actually do a remote meeting, move gears on what we're doing now and, and get laptops, that kinda stuff. Some, some decent speakers. Just kinda hard to find it right now. I just, you know, because you don't, you don't wanna be using your computer from home and then some reason get a virus that, you know, and just overall, especially, you know, you, you don't know. As soon as you come up with one software, virus software, there's somebody already out there trying to come up with a way to go around it.
As soon as you come up with one software, buyer's software, there's somebody already out there trying to come up with a way to go around it.
And 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 with other people in the household competing uses for that same. It's probably if you have a designated work computer, then it's it's.
Well, and that was one thing we did actually did, we the three of us, Shelley actually bought a brand set up and it was dedicated and no one else was. Was using it, um and we all made sure that we had um newly installed um virus protection and Dick from Second Source. Um our IT consultant touched base and checked in with everybody um on the setups, making sure and ma- making sure that you understood. Just proper way to handle accessing files and also doing um sort of irregular updates and things on security.
Any other questions from Michelle than that? Um I'm just gonna mention to the audience, if anybody's watching, that um probably around six o'clock or shortly before six o'clock. We'll plan to move uh to add to the agenda to include a discussion on the irrigation uh ban that's in effect. Um and the information that backs that up and how that came about, we'll probably be ready to discuss that um maybe in a just under a half hour from now. And we're gonna have our um consultants on Zoom as well so that they can listen and possibly help answer some questions as well. So if you're here to uh watch that part of it, I just wanted to let everybody know, it'll probably be closer to around six o'clock. And we'll finish the the rest of the financial analysis with Michelle and hopefully that'll all fall into place around that time. Did we wanna talk about? What was the position you're gonna have consider? That I that I nominated you for, was it the liaison?
Financial liaison?
Yeah.
I've spoken with the auditors a few times over the last year, um and they had just initially recommended having some kind of sign off from a board member. Monthly and then also perhaps taking a little bit more time, at least quarterly, um to look at the balance sheet um and really kind of. Drill down and ask any questions and look a little bit more in depth into the financials as a whole. Um so that was their recommendation and I agree with it, I think it'd be helpful. For me and I think it'd be helpful for all of us just to sort of. Ensure, pardon?
Be better.
Yes, in in sure comfort and the numbers, um as I said, you know, welcome. Welcome, fresh out of box, cause sometimes mine aren't so fresh at certain points and as I said, we. Keep adding on to the checklist, so we actually will just go through and um anything that's actually before you kind of add to make sure, you know, that you're double checking, but. The systems aren't infallible and neither am I, so. I think it would be something that would um would be prudent for us to to add.
So what what kind of time commitment do you think that would be, like how in-depth review and all that stuff, it's probably up to the the liaison.
I was I was gonna say, and I would think initially, you know, that first time or two might might be a little bit more involved, but as I said, um. Especially as far as the balance sheet, every single account that we have on the balance sheet, we have. A bank reconciliation or we have a backup of what the few items are in that account or or a full like our prepays, you know, we have the schedule of how. Um how those flow, you know, out each month, um into the expense accounts, um so. If we're doing it quarterly, monthly might be a little tough to pull a real formal packet together, um but quarterly definitely not a problem. Um and as I said, once once we run through, I'd say a couple of times, um you know, I can tweak things and. You'll get more familiar if you are the chosen one.
Does anyone have any specific questions on that or um anybody have a desire to be the liaison? Or if not, does someone wanna wait to be nominated?
You didn't look away.
I didn't want to tear either.
I was giving you the option.
Thanks, Joe.
I'll second that.
How is this anything from from treasure?
That's all the question, yeah.
Well, the the treasurer's responsibilities are to ensure that. Only the funds approved by the board. Are expended, so she is to get a approved manifest or an approved uh AP manifest or payroll manifest.
It's more the AP monitor.
So it's more the the money coming in and the money coming out, it's it's the tracking of that, looking at how we're spending the money and um. The accounting treatment of different things, that actually isn't specifically in the scope of the treasurer's duties. So it's mainly to ensure that. You know, all money's coming in and out are tracked, categorized appropriately. Um that the investment follows the investment policy of the district and that that also follows the RSAs, et cetera. Um so this would be really more. Uh scrutinizing the balance sheet and scrutinizing. The P and L, how things are recorded, how things are treated, I mean, and also really getting a solid understanding of. We're different than how municipalities have to deal with their full picture. Uh where what's called some enterprise entity, we function more like a business, we do full accrual. Uh mostly municipalities do a modified accrual, we do convert to a report. At the end of the year for DRA and just as a sign off point for the town, uh but our numbers don't actually contribute to the tax rate or or anyways. Tax rate, um obviously we use our financial. Outcome as part of our rate analysis, um but it's not a year to year adjustment in what the tax base will be for, we don't contribute to that for the town.
I guess I was wondering, this is probably just another liaison, like we have personnel liaison, it's not like a position that we should have a little stipend for or something. I I I didn't know what level of time commitment we were looking at here, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something, you know. Extravagant time, amount of time that we spent.
No, I think eventually it could also be something that. I can provide a binder, you know, for you to look over and and, you know, mark up your your questions and something you'd like to see. More in depth or discuss to make sure that you understand how I'm handling it, that I am handling it properly. And then if we need to bounce any questions to the auditors, we can do that.
If you just get the chocolate flowing, that's gonna be fine. Also, specifically those mint ones, you guys didn't seem to like healthy those.
Oh, okay. I'll keep you alert as you're waiting through.
So with those conditions, it sounds like Wolf's accepting or is that just? Yes, okay. Thank you for that, Wolf. I'm sure uh Michelle will make it as streamlined as possible for you to get through.
I will do my best.
Great, okay, um without any further questions, I guess we can move on to the actual financial review, uh starting with the analysis of revenues and expenditures reported.
So um being through May, we are ninety one point six seven percent. Uh through the financial year. Using that as a as a reference point for our revenues. Um we can see that overall, we're at a hundred and four percent, so we are already above. Above budget, there's a couple of things to note.
Above budget on revenue, so that's a good place to be.
That is, that is a good place to be and even with the. Deduction for the system development charge, that doesn't have an offsetting expense, so even pulling that, uh we would still be at ninety seven point seven percent. Um I still am waiting uh from the DRA um as far as their treatment for that, um if I don't have an answer, um. The auditor's gonna try and circle back with the RA um and determine a final handling for SDC. Um as we have it designed with our um our policy and the capital reserve. Account, but even without deducted, um we're at ninety seven point seven percent and also I did a thirty seven thousand dollar. Adjustment down in the revenues, allowing for any potential uh changes due to the stay at home. Although we've seen it, stay at home is really fluctuated, um I did full. A full report for March through May and I did see that. Compared to last year, for domestic water, we had in March. A slight increase over last year, but we have to remember too, we have our ninety percent increase, so we only saw an increase of three point nine, so we were. Essentially down in usage, um obviously the mercantile, which involves the schools, um that number was down throughout the three months. And industrial, it's a very small number, so sometimes just a small difference can make a big difference, but um overall, it was under eight point four percent. Uh I'm sorry, six point four percent for those three months, uh the mercantile was down eleven point three and domestic was. Up eighteen point eight. Interestingly, April, that was off from last year, thirteen percent down, and as I said, this year it has the rate increase. But we did see a fifty one point two percent increase over last year. So I think we've been well aware of usage that's been contributing to that, this report's not in.
Okay, thank you.
Um not in your report, um I just pulled it when I was just looking over, um looking over the numbers, I was curious to see how how it played out. So I think there's been some some impact of the stay at home, obviously shifting. Some of the water usage from mercantile and industrial to domestic, um and then I think that. Stay at home order and things lifting from May, um and I think also um sort of just a result of. The better weather and after the stay at home order, usage um had a great surge in May, so we saw we saw the numbers, the numbers there. Um and to date, the domestic is at uh ninety two point four percent of budget. Mercantile and industrial, uh mercantiles at eighty six point three and industrial um is at sixty eight point two. As we discussed, there's been some reclassifications there and where the industrial number is such a small number, small amount. They have a big impact um on the percentages, um meter charges. Hydrant and sprinkler are all well over a hundred percent, a hundred and seven point four for meter, one oh six point seven for hydrant. One oh one point nine for sprinkler, so we would expect to see the numbers falling there, both from the rate increase as well as um we have had. Uh new meters come on and we had some multi-unit setups. That were corrected and they're set up recharging accordingly, so that's all been reflected in the increase in revenues. We did have a new main. Uh account four oh four oh eight for Greenfield Farms two that has been paying. And a few items that expectedly would be down, we have the um transfer fee, our interest income. And the, although the fines and penalties are right at about what budget would be, we haven't seen, obviously we haven't been charging. Assessing it the last few months, um but we we will just about break, um even with. The budget um with what we had to be through um into March. But as I said, the transfer fees, those are tied in with properties changing over, I think with real estate, there's been some pause, um so we can see um some additional coming in. In the coming months to offset for that, um interesting, I'm obviously been impacted by everything and um turning on and off of water. Ties in with the fines and penalties, so you know, those are lower than budget, but overall, as I said, we're ninety seven point seven. Holding out the SDC charge and with the SDC charges in, we're at the hundred and four percent. And as far as payroll expense. Overall, all payroll expense items um brings us to eighty five percent of payroll budget for the year. We do have admin overtime coming in, just two thousand over year to date through May. Um we will have some additional overtime hours in June, as I said, we're we're trying to get the audit underway sooner. So that will factor in as well as account five oh two oh two for field staff overtime, um in the last. Month or so, we've had several leaks, major leaks, main breaks, um water level issues and also the. Audit even restriction monitoring, so that's all factored in for field staff, um overtime, so they're coming in a few thousand over uh forty four hundred. Through May on overtime, but overall, their salaries, they're still a hundred and almost sixty six thousand under for the year. There had been some staggering of the hiring process during the year. So now now we are um full staff as far as um the field and treatment go. Any questions on either the the revenues or the payroll expenses? Um also a point to note related to employee expenses is the health insurance, um. We were at seventy four, that is account five oh five zero zero on page two of the budget report. Uh we're at seventy four point eight percent, we've already received the June bill and with that factored in, uh we will. Finish up the year at eighty two point six percent, um and sixty nine thousand dollars under what we had budgeted. A few other items we already uh mentioned that are slightly over budget, uh telephone cable, um we added on some. Internet levels of service with our element system that were were needed. The fuel and propane, um Shelley is doing a review of those bills, so she hasn't gotten back to me on that yet. She was um just comparing to see um. What factors threw us off there, um just so we can also look at the coming budget to see if it's if it's gonna carry over. Motor vehicle expense, account six zero five zero zero. There is one reclassification and that goes from account six oh five three seven, which is the two thousand and twelve. Vehicle W forty one, um twenty nine hundred has been moved to. Account six oh five three three W thirty seven, which is the two thousand and nine vehicle. Uh one thing to be noted on the grouping of the two thousand nine, ten, eleven area that we're starting to see as we usually do. Just more expenses start to kick in for the older vehicles, um both older and some of the vehicles where we have higher mileage. Um we did have some. Incidents over the winter with plowing that we had some repairs that had to come through, um so those are in here as well. So we are ten thousand five hundred over what our budget was for this year, um I think. That will, one, be looking at the older vehicles, kind of looking at a history of how the expenses have been the last few years. Um we do usually try and use a ten year, um a ten year gauge um on vehicles, um and as I said, this winter, we just did have some. Um some mishaps um that resulted in summer repairs being needed after the winter season, um and we did have one. Um minor vehicle incident with a non-MVD vehicle that was just at our deductible, so we simply ended up paying that. Directly from. Directly from from district.
Do these numbers include the depreciation for the vehicles, just to make this.
This is currently.
Just to make this.
Yeah, so a lot, especially the older vehicles, I was reviewing the bills, it was. A little bit of everything, what they were starting um to mean, and I do know that Dave, you know, does does monitor that. Um and I know that usually about ten years is the threshold where we start seeing.
We should maybe compare them with the leasing. One of these days. Especially the the half ton trucks, the three quarter tons are bigger, they're hard to lease, but the half ton trucks is they're not for driving around town. If this doesn't include depreciation, this that's not far from the leasing costs, you have all the maintenance included usually. Have the tires, the brakes, nothing, maybe tires at the end of the lease, but.
How much miles that we put in, it would be running into.
We do have the history for the vehicles, so we would know certain ones, it would be viable and certain ones it wouldn't.
Yeah, and if you know how to do it, it doesn't matter.
Oh yeah, got all pieces out of. That's always the drawback, I heard, leasing gets you on the mileage.
I'm sure you understand these, I'm sorry, that sounds kind of silly, but you have to just understand.
Yeah, yeah.
It's uh.
It's a little bit more flexibility than.
Yeah.
They allude to.
You need to know the keywords to say. It's for another time maybe, but it's maybe something.
No, definitely.
All right, any other um questions on that or you wanna?
Um one other, one other line item was uh seven oh five two five R and M office equipment. We're coming in right now eighty five hundred over. The budget, there are a couple of items in there, I have some questions. Out to Dave that I feel things may fall more appropriately under like an outside services, I just need a little more, bit more information on what the work was done. By both the NRC and also Second Source, our IT consulting, because normally everything does go under the R and M office equipment. Um just I think some things were. Related to some newer projects that David done, so I don't know if it was necessarily. R and M or just some advising on. On the project that was related to, it was both the new meters and the GIS. Yeah, it just got a little murky for me, so um I put the questions out to Dave, um and we're gonna review them next week. Um and the only other major expense item uh to note. Over budget um is the engineering. And that is supposed to fall in. Under some EGGI projects that have moved forward this year. There.
It's probably new well investigations that I don't think we had scope for.
Uh we had a couple of things we had questions on, um there's the road salt mitigation. Well, form replacement is going straight to, um that's actually not hitting engineering, that's going uh to the balance sheet and then that's also coming. From capital reserves as it was voted on. Well, three alternative supply, that's where we have some questions. I wanted to touch base uh with legal as far as our unspent bond proceeds related to wells, I needed a little bit more information to share with them. If it would truly fall under new well or if it's a replacement at three, there's a lot of distinction if something's a new. Source versus just a replacement source, um and that's. Something that's right place to wait on. So um I have um questions out to him regarding that. As I said, otherwise it was the road salt mitigation, some uh. Artificial recharge, load analysis. And then the rest are kind of the standard um monitoring, water monitoring. And groundwater monitoring. That came through there.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions on any other line items? Um something to note on bank balances?
Yeah.
We received in June eight hundred and almost eight eight hundred and forty eight thousand from capital reserves. We withdrew for. The projects that have been designated, um the pilot study and premium for two oh two by five. Uh I did the four oh five K matching grant for a four and five treatment. From uh drinking water groundwater trust, um I just did payments to date on that, we still have an additional hundred and five. Um that we will get reimbursements for this fall and then the wire of the mainline extension for two sixty three. So we've received all of those funds, um and that's brought down our. Capital reserve for equipment and facilities to two point eight two, um and capital reserves overall. About five point one nine. We also have another eight hundred needing.
Those are not the numbers I'm seeing on here.
It's May and this is June. So that I was just giving you an update just because there was a significant change at the beginning of June, so. From May, I apologize, in June, we received, we withdrew funds uh eight hundred and forty, so we just brought down. The equipment and facilities to two point eight two and overall capital reserves to five point one nine. We have withdrawals slated. I usually give tentative dates to the trustee of trust fund, so for October. Four, four projects, that'll be another eight hundred and eighty nine thousand that we already have. Designated to be withdrawn, um and all our. Equipment except for um one, maybe from land makeup, new wells, they're all, we're still waiting. On input from legal. Other questions?
I think you're still on for the investment policy, is that, is she still gonna be here for that or?
Am I?
I don't know.
They can also deal with the next time, it's six o'clock now.
Yeah.
Well, it means it's the exact same as. That we approved, Michelle already discussed last year about um.
Okay. I don't know what there's really much to talk about, that's why I was just wondering.
There really isn't, because Michelle revised it last year so that we could do. We revised it just to expand it so that we could also have the investment with um acceptable banks as well as PDA. In the past, we had just PDA as our option, so we had expanded to have that flexibility. Um and there would be no other changes or recommendations that I would have to the investment policy, but it is required that it has an annual. Review and and fresh sign off.
Okay. So there's nothing here that you need us to vote on or sign anything?
We do need you to vote on it so I can sign off.
I'll make a motion, seconded.
Okay, so motion by Wolf and seconded by Ken. To approve of the investment policy dated uh effective July first, twenty twenty. Policy number zero four dash zero four dash B. Says effective July one, twenty twenty to June thirty, twenty twenty one. July one, twenty twenty to June thirty, twenty twenty one. I said that right? Any questions or discussion by anybody, um if not, we can. Take the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that carries for zero zero. So that's good for that to um. Sign off on that, Jill. Just that's it. Thanks, Michelle. And we echo the words that were kind words that uh. Michael said.
Thank you, no, and they're very, they're very good to work with and every year they they do have a practice, kind of digging a little deeper. Even if things, everything looks great, just like it did last year, they say, okay, now we can go even a little bit more in depth and just, there's always something we can. Focus on and improve, so they're the arduous uh resources for us.
Great. Great, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so six oh one and um. Think now we're going to insert the uh. Discussion on the um the irrigation ban that has been in effect. Thursday. Was the day, I believe it went into effect, it was Friday, Friday was Friday. Which was like. And um. I don't know if we've got uh Keith on the Zoom conference call here.
He's there.
If he can, if he can jump in, the guys from Underwood, I think he might want to. Listen in on this and um possibly offer some answers if we have questions, I will open this up to um the public after we. Discuss this, I'll open it up to the public if there's anybody out there that wants to ask some questions. At that time, instead of waiting till the end of the meeting, so um. You can go ahead and ask questions uh after we have this discussion here. So.
You know, I also want to note, um so Amanda is monitoring questions and she's shooting them off to me. By my cell phone, so that um no, I probably have a question for you.
Okay, and then you'll just read them off?
Yeah.
Alright, good. So that's good, so as questions come up, then we'll um we'll address them as uh as we go through this. So I think. How do we wanna start this, just by having this uh. Question and answer um. Document that we have here. Do you want me to just read through these or?
I was saying, we just read the question out and then we can uh discuss. The actual question and write hopefully answer.
So maybe to kind of kick this off, um. I know, just wanna get the information out there, I think it's well known that our wells four and five on the north side of town. Uh have been offline since two thousand and sixteen and we're presently completing a P fast treatment plant at those wells. So to make up for that lost water, we have a booster pump interconnected, interconnection with uh Penachuck Water Works from Nashville. And we have typically used that as a supplemental um source of water. In times of high use so that we can make up for the wells four and five being offline. Um and I'm sure the guys from Underwood can give us a a construction update on wells four and five later on, but. We believe those will be coming back online sometime this summer. And the MVD did take measures early on last year with the construction, commencement of construction to try and advance the timeline. There was a three month shutdown that was planned in the time schedule in the middle of the winter to allow the. Masons to not have to do their work in the middle of the winter. And MVD elected to pay, I believe it was around a thirty thousand dollar premium. To enclose that work area in uh temporary. Plastic and to heat that area so that they can complete that work. Since then, and that work did proceed. Since then, there have been more recent delays due to procuring parts. From out of the country and that has caused a delay because of COVID nineteen, some factories being shut down. So that extended the timeline out, so we're still going back and forth on justification from that from the contractor and um so. Maybe shortly Underwood can give us a little bit of an update on um what the construction schedule is at Wells four and five, but that certainly has. Uh prevented us from having all of our permitted sources online. Uh at the beginning of this this dry period that experience is pretty much from Memorial Day.
It all started Memorial Day, I was just gonna add, it's been almost like a. If I use it like a perfect storm in a sense, the rain, we've had the COVID. More people at home, um four and five being down. And then. Right after, really right after Memorial Day, this really kicked out, and it was just uh. We had, well, seven had to be cleaned, so that was actually part of towards the tail end of Memorial Day weekend into the first month uh into June. Right.
Which was supposed to be finished long before the warm season starts.
Yeah.
So that got delayed because of the contractor as well.
And we were doing with the with Penachuck connect uh interconnect on, we were doing pretty good with that. Uh getting through that, getting seven back online, and then the the weather kicked in.
And even before well seven, there was, there was, we had to replace a pump motor or.
Uh we had our.
A well three?
Well, three pump motor, the pump. Motor removed, we started doing some some uh grain in the oil, so we thought we might have a bearing issue, so we had that looked at before winter. I'm sorry, before the summer kicked in and we had that. That was back in service before Memorial Day, but that kind of slowed seven away clean. But once the heat kicked in, um is when it, everything really started to drop, it just. The the extra plantings and and such, when people being home really put a uh demand on the system. And being down the wells as well.
Right, so so some of the wells being down to begin with was, you know, we were starting off already sort of at a disadvantage. It was when we went to get the makeup water from Penachuck connection. It was a challenge in in on Penachuck's end and delivering the water to us because of a restriction in their system that was not known. Until we demanded the water and Milford demanded water and at that time. Penachuck realized that they were not putting out the amount of water that they would have expected to put out. Realized that this is a restriction in their system somewhere, and I believe they've identified where they think that restriction is. And it should be under construction this season, and that after hours to see if they can solve that problem, so. You know, had it not been for a series of events like this, we may not even be having this discussion right now, but we are here and. Uh we know Milford is um in an irrigation ban, we're in an irrigation ban. Our system, we serve two of Penachuck's systems from with with our MVD water. And those systems, Cabot Preserve and Sohegan Woods. Yes, are both also in irrigation bans.
Yes, they will, they are, they will pass on whatever restriction be imposed, they also get this.
Right, so Milford's got an irrigation ban, I don't believe the main system in. City of Nashville has any restrictions at all, but. That's up to Penachuck to determine that, so.
They were considering.
They were considering it, and I believe they haven't had a ban here as ever, right, I was told.
Precedents, they had not. And they have never done any water restriction.
Right.
And they're forces themselves.
Well, I think part of important to mention is uh this is a four page spreadsheet. You know, obviously staggering the pages here, but this is a four page spreadsheet of townships and. These are paladins, these are paladities in the state of New Hampshire that have uh one or another kind of uh watering ban in place. Create, so um it goes all the way from. Um Hempstead, Newton, Playstow, Salem, Milford, um Dairy, Epping, across the board, Litchfield. It really goes across the state and uh again, it's four pages. Uh with about, I don't know. Between fifteen and between ten and twenty line items each of of townships that have some kind of uh.
Irrigation.
Irrigation and outside watering restriction in place, so uh cer- certainly Merrimack is not alone with this. A lot of these here. This one's us?
Yes, this one just went to the bottom here, it's four pages.
Oh yeah, that's right. But uh again, it's certainly not um something that is uh suited to Merrimack at all.
Alright, so with that introduction, um. We kind of prepared a a bunch of questions and answers here, so. Was the intent to have me read through these or would, how do you guys wanna?
Yeah, I'll read the question and then we can.
Right.
Formulate an answer before, yeah.
Well, yeah, the first question I think is is the most basic question, why, why is there? Well, yeah, the first question I think is is the most basic question, why, why is there a shortage? Um. Because some of the wells are offline, people are using unusually high amounts of water. Uh backup. This is, this has got some um. I think Keith had uh put something together here, the challenge at MBD is. The high summertime use, especially the maximum days due. To irrigation. Uh, it is significant in Merrimack with certain wells temporarily down, Wells four and five, the approach has always been to keep. Penachak Waterworks in Manchester Waterworks uh in place for emergency. Uh connections that are essential in providing uh for the replacement of the lost water for Wells four and five. Uh, this is why we made the pump station improvements at the Route one oh one A uh connection with Penachak. And that makes the system more reliable and consistent. Uh, the challenge is that Penachak has a hydraulic limitation that has hampered and reduced the use of Penachak water. That's available to Merrimack. And hopefully that will be corrected today or tomorrow. Uh. So I think we've, we've already kinda talked about that answer. Um.
If I may jump in here for a second. Keith or um uh Pete, I don't know, this this um chart is coming from. From them, right?
Underwood, yes.
From Underwood, so the uh water consumption chart. I wasn't sure if that was possibly something you can maybe bring up.
Can you repeat that question more times?
Yes, so the. Water production consumption chart.
Yeah.
Been handed out to your class today that you guys have in file. Is it something you could possibly s- share quick on the uh Zoom meeting?
Oh, uh, yes, if you give me a minute, I can call it up.
Basically what I wanna share here with, if you guys agree, uh on the board, I wanted to share how drastically the difference. Uh. You know, pans out between uh the total production and consumption rates between the summer months and and the winter months. We're not just talking about twenty percent increase or anything like that, we're talking about a. Faridus right, six million. Cubic feet per month to.
I have it up Wolf, if you want me to try to share that.
So you guys might be better talking about the graph than I am, um. But I think it's important for the public to see that we're not talking about a marginal increase or even the, you know, some twenty percent increase over the summer. We're talking about. Double, if not. Tripling. The consumption rate.
In the uh pressure release, uh. I use the same timeframe, so af- uh after Memorial Day to the eighteenth. The average uh daily uh demand was uh two point five million last year.
Two point five million what?
Gallons per day. This year, we're over four point one million gallons per day. You know, just from last year to here, it's all due to the the weather, it's, it's, there are some added. Uh. Residents in town, but majority of it is weather, weather related. It's just the the hot, the heat comes in and and uh lack of rainfall. And you look at watering that you don't water or that don't normally water and. Um, it was, it's a, it's a big demand on the system. And also note that we had the same wells down last year. So, and we do not hook independent. Last year.
Right.
So I I guess one of the things that I would like to see as a chart, we talked about this a couple minutes ago, um before the meeting. Um, Keith and Peter, I don't know if that's something you guys can provide, it would be great for us to s- to distinguish the water consumption in summertime. Um, between normal household use and outside use. Gardening use, lawn irrigation use. Um. And I understand that we can't have, you know, we don't have meters that distinguish the one from the other at our, at our customers, I understand that, but. It's probably somewhat safe to assume that the household use doesn't really fluctuate all that much between winter time and summer. Granted, in summer time, people may shower maybe a little bit more often because they come in from the garden and work or from 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 outside, you know, whatever, construction jobs and so on. Um, but um. Fluctuation in in household use between summer and winter shouldn't be drastically different, should be. Some increase in summertime, but not as much um uh as one thing, but um. If we were able to graph out the spikes due to outside watering. Um, you know. Reports for con- uh about the consumption, I think that would be. Painting a very clear picture.
Yeah, I tried to um share that chart, but it it doesn't allow me since I'm a visitor here, so I can't put that on the screen, although I do have it on mine. But I, I, I think um Wolf, that's exactly right, I, in in Merrimack, the summertime consumption or production and consumption has always been extraordinarily high compared to the average. And uh and I think in from other communities, we've seen Merrimack tends to be on the high end of that curve as well, so the irrigation is a significant component. We can't measure it, like you said, separately or distinctly, we can't separate it out, but we do, we do believe that's the case. The other thing that we've always seen in the summer that's um. Unique or unusual in Merrimack, if you, if for those of you who do have the chart in front of you, the the red line represents the consumption, the blue line represents the production, and the difference is always what's leaking or. Or un- unaccounted for or non-revenue water. But there's a bigger gap in the summer than there is in the, in the rest of the year, it seems like. Um, there's always water, um production that matches fairly close to the consumption in the non-summertime, so we've never been able to quite. Understand why the production goes up significantly that um uh without picking it up in the meters. So that's something else that we've been paying attention to, but you can really see the significant blue spikes on on the production. Um, it does go up, it does go up a lot, and what we're noticing is historically, there's always been a different. Di- a a gap into what's being produced to what's being measured in the summer for some reason. So, uh, your average is, yeah.
I just allowed you to share, um, I just asked if nobody else tries to hijack the meeting.
Oh, I can share it now, okay.
Right.
Yeah, you probably, you can probably see it now.
It's coming up.
There you go.
You got it.
Okay, um, good, so this way everybody can see it, I'll zoom in a little bit here, this chart on the, on the. X axis goes from two thousand and six to uh the most recent data was ju- when we ended this chart was really January twenty twenty. And the red line shows the amount of water that we're metering in the customers' meters. And and what Wolf was pointing out was this diurnal situation or this variations in the, in the winter times. That it's low and in the summers it goes up every year, it does this. And what we, we, we have that recorded here, and you can see it also matches fairly close in the wintertime, spring and fall to. The blue line, and the blue line is production, so during. Fall, winter and spring, we are seeing a relatively close correlation to what we're generating for water, to what we're selling for water. But what happens in the summer, and here is an example of two thousand and twelve, we get these large production spikes, but yet we're not picking it up in the meters. So there's two things that are important here, actually three that I wanna point out, but the first one is we have these significant spikes. In production, and that's what we're seeing right now, and then in the summer, we see that gap widening between the two, we've never been able to sort that out. The third thing that I think is important to know, we are and have been successful in really sort of working to produce uh reduce some of these production spikes. And they have been coming down, and you can see this by the trend lines along here, that actually the production, even though we've got more connections. And even though um Merrimack's got more people in it than it did fourteen years ago, we are seeing a steady decline in production, that's because we're doing better with. Conservation, we're doing better with leaks, and we're doing better with other things. And we're seeing the same thing with with consumption on a, you know, on an annual basis, we don't have what. What's happening right now in June, that would be right here, I think we, you know, would be interesting once we get the data over the next three or four months. Uh, or for the past three or four months to get it on here, but I suspect we're gonna use, see the same high blue spikes. So does that give you an overview of what that chart is? Any other questions on it?
Yeah, no, that's helpful.
Well, I think we also safely say keep too the spikes of production, obviously that, that's not necessarily um. Unfound water, those are things like flushing um that we do during the warmer months.
They are, they are, Joe, and and we do, um, we call this red line authorized consumption. It's not me, we don't use metered consumption here because we do try to account for the things that you track for flushing or. Fire department practicing or um. Various things that we're aware of, those are normal operating requirements for the system and we do have uh you, you guys track those, so those are in here. But they're, and they're intended to be in here, so this comes right off the balance, the uh mass balance or the uh water. Balance that we send to the state every, every March. But uh, but we do have some of those in here, so the difference that you are seeing between the blue and the red is truly what we, you know, we haven't been able to account for yet.
Alright, so.
I can, do you want me to unshare that, I um?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Turn back off so we don't have anything.
Alright, so I'll, I'll read another question, there's another question about uh what does MBD do to prepare for, for future growth? And I, I know you've done some um, some studies in the past. Um, so I don't know if you wanna maybe just. Try to talk about what the. What the last study that was done uh looks here, like um. You know, we talked about um. Capital improvements to to bolster the supply, like Penachak Waterworks Pumping Station. Um. I know there's a question about um, why does Merrimack not simply switch over to connect to Penachak or Manchester Waterworks? Um, the, the two things I, I wanna call out to that is um, we have used Manchester in the past. For a temporary situation when we needed to shut part of the distribution system off in the northeast part of town. Um, and we, we needed the supplement water for that, and we got it from Manchester because the connection is on the northeast side of town. But the problem is that Manchester uses chloramines for disinfection, whereas MBD just uses standard chlorine disinfection. And those two disinfection uh compounds are, they sort of neutralize each other, so you'd be left with a distribution system that didn't have. Potentially enough disinfectant in it to be effective. So that requires that we need to actually physically shut off a portion of our distribution system. And open up the connection to Manchester, flush all of the MBD water out of it. Then leave the valves off, so that section of the distribution system. Becomes just an extension of the Manchester distribution system. And as long as all the water is chlorinated with the chloramines from Manchester, adequate disinfection there. When we go to uh take that system and and convert it back into MBD's distribution system. We gotta sort of do the reverse where we flush Manchester's water out of that section. And flooded with Merrimack's water, so. We can't just open up the connection and let all that water flow in from Manchester throughout the entire distribution system of MBD because. Where those two sources would be mixing, there would be a deficit potentially of. Non-disinfected water, and that's, that's a bad situation we don't wanna get in, obviously, so. Um, so there's some logistics to that, if Manchester happened to be using. That would be just as easy as open the valve and let it flow in, kinda like what we're doing with Penachak. Um, the reason we're using Penachak, we have a a booster pump over there and they have compatible chlorine disinfection like we have. Um, Penachak's currently getting their source of water out of the Merrimack River, which has low levels of PFAS in it. Obviously, our wells now still have PFAS in it, in the future. The challenge is gonna be that when all of our source tw- well water is treated in in PFAS free. Using the Penachak connection. Would still have some level of PFAS in there, it's, it's below the, the twelve MCL that I'm aware of. Um, but. The, the challenge is that I think our customers are expecting to have non-detectable PFAS. So in the future, that's gonna present a challenge where if we wanna bring that water in from Penachak. Under an emergency situation, we may have to deal with it just not being treated for non-detect PFAS. It will certainly dilute out and our system would be very low. Uh, but that, that's a challenge where we don't wanna have to build infrastructure to treat PFAS. Just for an emergency connection. Uh, it, it, we're questioning or I'm questioning whether it makes sense to. Um, bring more sources online, just basically, a lot of sources in in Merrimack, future sources. Are likely to have PFAS in it too, so we'd have to build these elaborate treatment plants, so here we are potentially spending tens of millions of dollars in the future. To treat PFAS just to p- provide PFAS free water that is really only needed for irrigation. And for nine or eight or nine months of the year. Those treatment plants aren't even gonna be used for their full capacity because we don't need all that water. So in the long run, I don't know that it makes sense to treat. The double and triple amount of irrigation water that we need beyond the winter uses, you know, that. People think it's just as simple as putting a well in and feeding it into our system, it's not, it's millions of dollars to treat that water. And we're just treating it to be used for irrigation in the middle of the summer, we don't, we, we might not need half of that infrastructure throughout the rest of the year. So we better really think about committing. A lot of capital on future treatment plants, and I'm, I'm not talking about these treatment plants that we're already having progress and designed for Wells two, three, seven and eight. We're committed to doing those, I'm talking about if people think that we're gonna try and meet. A five million gallon or more demand in the future by having more wells put online. That's a, that's a, that's a cost that we're faced with is to treat that water in the future to non-detect. Just so that it can be put back into the ground. You know, I, I'm thinking it might be better for some of the large irrigation users in town. Some of the industrial and commercial facilities and even some of the larger residential systems, if they wanna put in their own irrigation wells. That doesn't have to be relied on MBD um infrastructure and cost to our customers. Just to treat water for irrigation, so there's a, there's a future concern that we gotta think about. Uh, in terms of getting water from outside sources and additional sources in Merrimack, but. Um, that's probably more answer than, than we wanted to get into on this, but.
And it's not just PFAS, it's also sort of chloride and magnesium in cases.
That's true too.
So. It's not just PFAS.
Yeah, so, you know, for example, what Wolf, what Wolf is talking about is what right now, we have um iron and manganese treatment plant at well seven and eight. And um, you know, the more water we're producing, the more costs we're gonna have for well seven and eight. For that iron and manganese treatment, so we wouldn't wanna be looking to build another one of those plants. Just so that we can supply the additional water for irrigation in the summer. So there's a lot more cost, it, it, it's just not, I've seen, you know, over the public forums over the weekend, everyone just saying, why don't we just have more wells, what, why haven't we just been. You know, investigating more wells, it's not that easy, but we are actually right now investigating additional. Well sources in the Natick Brook area, and Emery and Garrett are um. Charged with doing that. The reason we're doing that is we're trying to find a new well source in that corridor that can replace well three, which we have online now, which is active. The problem with well three is that that's gonna require costly iron and manganese treatment. Uh, so we're trying to look, when I say costly, I'm talking about maybe five or six million dollars just to treat the iron and manganese at well three. Before we even treat it for PFAS, so we're looking to see if we can find a clean source of water that doesn't have iron and manganese. And a source that doesn't have sodium and chloride contamination like well three also has, so elevated sodium chloride. So we're a little re- we're reluctant to pursue well three with an iron and manganese treatment requirement as well as sodium and chloride. Um, and we're, before we commit the money to doing that, we're investigating to see if there's another source in the same area or in the proximity. That is less iron and manganese, that doesn't require treatment and has less sodium and chloride. and has less sodium and chloride, so that we don't worry about making an investment that may be a problem in the future. It's, it's basically infeasible to treat for sodium and chloride in our well system right now. It would be, it would move us to find new well sources, um, before we did that iron, uh, sodium and chloride treatment.
Did you, did you mention Mitchell Woods that we've?
Right, do you wanna go over that one or?
Um, so go ahead. I guess to you, to, uh, that question, I mean, we have in the past been actively looking for additional sites and, um, we've identified Mitchell Woods, which is a, I think, a three hundred gallon a minute well. It would be a sh, uh, emergency use well or a, uh, peak demand well for the three months out of the year. To, to use, it would be into the high service, which would actually help out greatly. We have, uh, started looking at artificial recharge as well, um, which would be a, um, a line from the Meramec River that would, um, basically replenish, replenish the aquifer, aquifer at the well four and five site, um, to, to allow us to actually hopefully get the full eight seventy, twenty-four, seven, seven days a week and.
Gallons per minute.
Gallons, I'm sorry, yeah. The gallons per minute, which would help out greatly. Um, so I mean, we, we have done over the years, I guess, to that. We're always looking for extra, additional sources. We're trying to, uh, uh, plan for the future. Um, but it does take time to, to vet out these sites and, you know, um, they don't always, uh, pan out. Um, I could, I could probably kind of, you know, there's been four or five places, or actually probably more than that, six places that we've looked in town and, and actually invested time in drilling test wells that we really haven't found any, you know, of substantial. I mean, there's, there's water in every place we look, it's just not, we're looking for high volumes, right? Three hundred gallons a minute plus.
Yeah, I think that's maybe also something to explain and, uh, maybe Underwood can chime in on that. I'm gonna try and put in a layman's term for myself, because I'm smarter than that. Um, we, we only have really three aquifers in town, right? We have the aquifer that goes along the river, or where, where wells four and five are. We have the aquifer that goes basically along side continent of Bullitt Bar where, uh, two and three are.
Natick Brook Aquifer.
Right, and then we have the one out on the, on the Ameriside, uh, which is seven and eight, well, seven and eight. And, um, in, in, in a nutshell, those are the three aquifers they have, we have in town. We have some side branches and maybe some smaller ones, but the main ones are these three. And, uh, we need to also understand that the permitting of pump rates that the State of New Hampshire grants, the Meramec Village District, is based on a per aquifer, um, volume, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, if we have a certain aquifer, we can just put in three or four more, um, pumps into that same aquifer and keep pumping away and hope to get more and more and more pumping volume granted. Uh, it's at least, um, leveled out because we, obviously those are, that's part of the determine from the pumping test, the pump tests. It, uh, when we find a source, we determine how much can be pulled out of that particular aquifer. So we got, like, we are pretty much maxed out in the network workout. So that's why we, you know, in order to replace well three, basically we take well three offline, putting on the, the new sources. It's, it's really not gonna, it could potentially gain us a little bit, but not, um, not more than what we're getting now. I mean, we are permitting, they have like well two for fifty hundred gallons a minute, we're not currently pulling that out. Uh, but we, there could be some improvements, but not, not so good. And on that note, we have, um, a well, uh, identified and permitted already up on the west end of town, Mitchell Woods, which, uh, is a very clean well, which I think was even.
That's PFAS, that's PFAS free as well. It was not, it was non-detecting all PFAS.
That's true, I shouldn't say free.
Right, so it's, uh, it was, uh, very clean as far as sodium chloride, very clean as far as iron and manganese, but definitely also very clean as far as PFAS, but it has a low production.
Right.
So no charge on aquifer, so. Basically, we can, um, it'd be a, it's like I said, three or four months of the year, we're gonna yield a lot of it. So we're, we're using it hard in, uh, by August, let that rest. I mean, it could be used at any time, but it's a courtesy source as well, which is, right, then watch where you draw those out of it.
So that well's approved, it's just, we haven't, um, commissioned to go ahead and put the water line and the power to it, build a little pump station, coordination station over there. We were kind of, we've been, we've been also investigating, instead of replacement well for well three, we're hoping if we find a large enough source that we won't have to have this small source on the side at, at Mitchell Woods. But, um, you know, if, if this kind of demand is something that we might be sustaining, seeing this, this demand that we saw through May and, if that's gonna be something that's more permanent, we're not, I'm not convinced yet if it's a at-home COVID issue or if it's, um, if, if it's something related to having more development in town. Now, the one thing I, you know, and, and maybe, maybe Underwood can weigh in on this, but when there are new projects that come before the planning board, we have an opportunity to review them and confirm whether we have a sufficient supply, uh, to, to supply those projects. In some cases, they may or may not, um, propose that they're going to include irrigation in those projects. So we may be factoring in, in some cases, just their potable demand and then find out that they've hooked up an irrigation system and using significantly more water than we were aware that they were going to use. So I don't know if you wanna comment on that a little bit, Keith? If, 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 you know, what, what's the standard practice when you review a, a request for a project to determine if we have adequate capacity to serve them? Uh, you know, what, what typically do you look at? Is it, uh, irrigation as well as potable demand and, you know, kinda what happens in, in those questions, I guess?
It definitely includes irrigation and, and we first start by requesting from the owner, the applicant, the engineer, what they project the residential and, 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 uh, irrigation demands will be. And so we then have the, the ability to react to whether or not we think it's reasonable and whether they've included everything. And then there's always that letter issued that identifies how that stacks up against your current consumption and your available production. And I think what's happening right, right now is we're just stuck between, uh, losing, um, you know, some sources temporarily. Uh, but you've always had the capacity to take on those new sources, especially since historically and, um, recently we've seen the re, the reductions in, in the, in the consumption and the production. So despite the increases, um, the, the peaks that, I, I also wanna back up or, or at least respond to one other question I think maybe Wolf had, but we've always had a planning target here in Meramec and it goes back to the master plan reports that were issued. I think the first ones are two thousand and seven. I think there's even some that predated us that were there. Um, but your target right now, and we, we are and expect that the max days in Meramec, what we've been working towards is five point nine million gallons a day. And so that's issued in the last master plan report that was two thousand and fourteen. And the average day, we use the summer target of around four point one. So, um, we have, uh, uh, some of the things that we think we're seeing. I don't know that we've actually, we, we know exactly what we saw for production or consumption yet. We're still trying to collect the data, but they, what I've seen, they're probably falling pretty close to what, you know, within or under our targets. Um, it's just that it's been coupled with two or three si, uh, situations with Penechuk, well seven, well three, and the fact that wells four and five are off temporarily, um, that's sort of put us into this, this circumstance. But there's always been a target and there's always, every time we get a significant development in town, there are letters out there that show how these things fit within the available supply. And irrigation is part of that.
Okay, irrigation is part of that.
Yes.
So that, that was a question that I had. So one more, another thing that I keep sharing with, with, with people on, on, on social media is that unlike a, uh, a water treatment plant that uses surface well water, we can't just ramp up or down our production uh, to meet spike demand, right, or peak demand. So we, we use, we need to buffer it with, um, the three holding tanks we have in town. So we have a steady, continuous, somewhat slower production rate, right? So certainly that the peak demand is, um, as far as the flow rate and consumption rate goes. Um, and we basically need to use the, the low consumption hours to prepare for the peak consumption hours by filling those tanks and replenishing those tanks. So when we look at these numbers of total consumption, are we taking into account a timing effect? So what I'm saying is, um, ideally, you know, we would coordinate in town that everybody spreads out their irrigation. So not everybody irrigates at the same time of the day because now our, um, consumption is going during those hours of the day, right? So of these short hours where we complete the tanks with irrigation, where everybody irrigates, of these short hours then overburdening the tanks in those two short hours. So at the end of those two hours in the morning, the tanks are now very, very low for, we, we don't have enough time to, to fill them back up. So we'll, we'll, I was generally seeing like a three, three or four foot drop. Five o'clock seems like the town wakes up and then our Turkey Hill tank just drops and it goes, uh, you'll see a, a, uh, like a three foot drop right off. Seven, eight o'clock or so, once it kinda that demand goes away, Turkey Hill kind of planes out, still drops a little bit, but it's, it's a slower drop while we're filling, but such as tanks. We have two zones, we have a high service and a regular pressure zone. And we have a booster pump that fills the high service. We're anywhere from twelve to fifteen hundred gallons a minute from our core system filling the, the high service. So it's essentially, that's water that's not going into Turkey Hill tank and kinda just playing off. And then you'll see, that kinda sticks, you know, five o'clock at night now, you get the, the, the supper time, you know, a little bit more of a drop, but it's not as much of a drop as it is in, in that five AM drop. Then you'll see about nine thirty, ten o'clock, the man kinda was off. That's been the time that we can fill and we just don't have enough time between that nine thirty, ten o'clock till that five AM when this, this kind of demand's going on, actually to flush.
So, and that's, that's the way you want the tank to work. That's, that's the reason the tank is there to buffer that, that there's some water stored that's available for the peak use that maybe all the wells combined together would be challenged to provide that peak flow. And then when that peak flow goes down, that's when the opportunity for the steady flow of the wells to replenish the tanks. And, uh, and that's normally how it works. Now, what we were running into was because, you know, we're short on wells four and five are offline. We had these, these pumps and things that we had to replace. That's why we needed to hit the Penechuk connection. And what was happening was in the middle of the evening, the Penechuk called us and, and asked us to stop pumping our interconnection because they were having a challenge in supplying us in Milford. So they were trying to allocate the water. And Milford, and, and Keith, I'll ask you to explain this a little bit in the future. They have a wholesale agreement, from my understanding, Milford and Penechuk. Uh, whereas we just have a retail agreement because we only need this water on an emergency basis. You know, so we don't necessarily need the wholesale agreement because that would commit us to have to buy a certain volume of water every day that we don't typically need for, you know, last year we didn't need it at all. It was just a matter of a few days, we had Penechuk connection open. In two thousand and eighteen, I think we did about maybe fourteen million gallons or something in the month of July. So it wouldn't make sense for us to buy all this water, um, because we're probably buying it at a rate that's higher than we're, we're selling it to our customers. So that's not financially the best, uh, you know, feasible way to do it.
Let me, and I think another good way to sort of understand what happened over the last week or two or even since Memorial Day, and Ron, you can correct me if I have the numbers, the data wrong, but as I understood it, every, every day we were losing a little bit on the tank, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more. And I think Wolf, you're right, there is, there is an equalization. And Don, you're right, there's an equalization component, as, as Ron was explaining, but that's usually a very small component. We want that tank to turn over equalization when we, when we have these peak demands a little bit. Let's just say ten or twenty percent of the tank at most, but then we should be seeing it filled back up immediately. And what was happening here over the days and days and days, this tank was draining. And to the point where we actually felt this is why you put the conservation, um, ban in because we didn't have enough fire protection and we worried about the fire protection. The tank was so low that we were having other couple, health, uh, safety issues. So when the conservation full ban went in on Friday, it was an unpopular decision, but within two or three days, that tank filled back up. And so as I understand it, it filled back up. So the question will be now, when can we look to release it? But we at least got the tank full. And what it pointed out, what it did is in three days, we put three million gallons a day in the tank. So we were, you know, producing water and putting a million gallons a day in the tank. So the ban worked, um, it did what it needed to do, which is the good news because the odd evens in some of these in, interim bans weren't, weren't doing it. We were still seeing the tank draining and we had to take a step. And I think you guys said it earlier too, we were producing water as fast as we could, but the tank was still draining every day. So that has to be into the calculus on what we were using. It's more than, we were actually using more than we were producing is why the tanks were draining. So, um, it was an unfortunate circumstance, but, um, I think at least we averted the, uh, you know, this, the, the, the fire protection issue because the tanks are at least now filling or close to fill, I think, uh, at least one of them is, I know from last I heard.
We're in good shape, but, um, the last I looked, we, we probably will actually satisfy tonight in wells two and three, probably will cycle.
But that also shows you, that, I think it really shows you that it's, it, you know, really, I mean, it, it, I'm not saying irrigation is bad, but it was the irrigation, I think, that was really creating the, the significant demand.
Which also maybe could lead to a discussion maybe later, maybe not right now, but maybe later today. Could we, could we find an intermediate way between the complete outside watering ban and the odd even? I know there's some townships that have some, some intermediary solution for that. Maybe just allow maybe a morning watering, but not an evening morning or something like that.
Yeah, and, and to Don's point earlier, that, that I wasn't actually even thinking about until actually Don mentioned the other day was even if we add sources, we're gonna have to, more likely we're gonna have, you know, some sort of, some sort of a treatment. So we're, it's really costing way more, a lot more money to produce water to dump on the ground. Which is, right, and so it, this is definitely something that's gonna, we're gonna have to, there's gonna be more discussion on it, I, I think, in the future to do.
Right, well, I think we all agree that the odd even ban, even though it may not be liked, is, it makes a lot of sense. And it's, in, in reality, as far as I'm being told by, by people that, that take care of my grass, it, it, it doesn't make sense to water the grass every day because it creates shallow roots and you want deep roots. So watering every day, right? It, I would vote for con, continuing the odd even ban. I would continue that, even if you have plenty of water. Because the State of New Hampshire, for good reasons, has a conservation mandate for all water districts, I think, all townships and everything.
If you want any kind of, uh, EES funding or, or state funding, you, you need to have a conservation plan.
And that needs to be said again, can you, can you say that again?
Any kind of funding that we go for through, you know, EES, um.
Which includes those that we receive right now for well one, five.
Yeah, you, they want you to have a conservation plan.
Not four, uh, two or three.
So it's like two.
It's like three, yeah.
You know, it's definitely being pushed from the state. So it, to have these conservation plans, so, so if there's a town out there that doesn't have it, they, they will eventually have a, one district that, you know, they want some money, they, they, um, so be a part of those funds, they, they will create the conservation plan, right?
So one thing we didn't cover at all is, uh, the drought in itself. Um, Keith, you had said it here, the, um, according to UNH, Durham has had the less of, less than half inch of rain over the last thirty days and rainfall has been low statewide, really in New England altogether really. Normal rainfall is typically seven times higher. Um, and obviously needs to hire demands by individuals deciding that they wanna irrigate. Um, and that has direct impact on, on our consumption.
So one thing I do wanna point out, the reason we enacted the, uh, water restriction, uh, you know, water.
Uh, you know, water, it's like water man, it wasn't per drought, it was just making pass.
Correct.
But with that being said, the state also issued uh the same day that we put our um. Before we did our all out water restriction. That uh abnormal dry conditions and they're they're warning of possible droughts in the future. So even if we had, if we kept, I, and I don't have behind this, but my belief is if we kept pumping the way we were. We would be pumping ourselves into a drought at some point, so it was a never. And and I think it was exacerbated with the restriction in the system that Penechak has. When they, when we needed the water, and they called us several times and said, you guys gotta shut off the connection. You know, we're giving you too much water, we need to allocate it to our own customers. Their own, you know, their own major source in the city, which has absolutely no restrictions at all. And we're in the, in a complete ban, and they're asking us to reserve resources for them. It's their water, so I guess they can tell us what we we can, can and can't do with it. It doesn't seem fair on the surface, but um.
I do want, they did work with, I mean. When I s- you know, I did say to him at one point, like, I, I cannot shut off, I mean, we're at, you know, ten feet. If I shut off now and I don't at least make this by morning, we're gonna be at this point, you know? I just, and then it snowballs, so we're gonna lose, I'll give it to you, you give it to me. I need at least till ten thirty, when that demand goes away and I can, so.
Get those tanks back.
Much rather had it twenty-four seven, but I mean, uh, they did, right?
But I'm saying, this isn't something we, we decided on our own, we were basically asked, pretty much told to shut that connection off.
Yes.
You know, it wasn't, it wasn't, oh, we won't bother using it, we'll go into an irrigation ban instead. It was like restricted on using it. The only other avenue we had was a air irrigation. We had already tried the five to eight o'clock AM and PM restrictions.
It, you know, it's funny, we, we initiated, it just seemed like it was getting worse. We initiated the five to, the five eight AM, the five to eight PM. And it, it, we were out enforcing and trying to enforce, and it just worsened.
It was almost like that was a wake-up call for everybody to start irrigating that hadn't been. So it didn't, it didn't have the full effect of what we were looking to have.
It was getting hotter too, right? That, you know, it was, that was, I think that's definitely a factor as well, but it was getting hotter. And no rain, so.
So that adjustment that Penechak does right now to the piping system, is that something that the estimates have continued?
I, I, so I'm actually, once we, that'll lose me, I'm gonna try to, I might go for a ride over the seat too.
Yeah, it would be interesting, so, so there's a chance that that's gonna be, we're gonna be going back to full supply for Penechak within. Not full supply for the system.
Well, we will have that emergency connection back. Right now, we're fine without it, we're, we're satisfied, um the measures that we put in place work. And and Dawn and I were talking earlier, uh, you know, if there's gonna be a timeframe that we can open it back up again. And my recommendation would be not till after we get four or five back online. Cause it's, it's, if we go back to using Penechak, we're using a me- uh. An emergency source or a source, if something else happens, we're back in the same. Yeah, that, that would be my recommendation, but. Yeah. I don't know, I, I guess we can, we can probably talk about that a little more, I mean. What we don't wanna do is be flipping back and forth between restriction and.
Yeah.
And even odd, and then restriction again, you know, we kinda wanna not keep going back and forth. Because the enforcement of that is, is crazy, you know?
The other, the other thing, if I may, um Dawn, is uh we, I think it would be important to sort of collect as much data as we can on the consumption or the production. Um, uh metering information that we have from the wells, even from Penechak and the uh, and and try to um take a look truly at. How much we did uh use, and maybe we can get some skated charts, Ron, on tank levels. We can probably predict what and how maybe they drained, but in, in some, some way, I think we have to sort of take a close look. At what the data says to help you in your decision making, no matter what it is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, I would definitely like Underwood to be part of that analysis, just to kinda, you know, give us some advice as well as uh. You know, what was the true consumption here, factor in what was coming in from Penechak, look at how the tanks dropped. Cause you, you know, you got some water coming out of storage, you got water coming in from Penechak, you got water coming in from our wells. And you really gotta add those three together to really know what the true demand is, you know? Like, like we haven't, we, our demand probably went down considerably Friday and Saturday, obviously. But our well pumping rates didn't go down, because those had to replenish the tanks, so. Looking at our well production is not really telling us what our consumption is. If we're losing water in the tanks, cause this supply coming out of the tanks that's being consumed, that's not showing up in the well data. So, you know, we really need to take a look at that and really determine what we're seeing for the peak day demand. And I know we, you and I were on the phone earlier, Keith, and I was starting to look at some numbers, and I had the numbers from June first to June eighteenth. And when you factor in the, the water we were getting from Penechak. Um, we were almost consistently over four point one million gallons a day on that. And I look back over the last two years, and I didn't see, you know, eighteen days almost straight. Of that level of consumption over any period, July or any, or August. Or I thi- even on our main peak time of year, which in the last two years, which you'd normally expect to see that, so.
It was incredible, I, I just watching it.
Right.
I, I was just baffled.
So, so just to get back to the, the question about do we have enough source capacity in general with wells four and five back online? I wanna revisit something you said earlier, that we had a peak day demand of um over five billion gallons in the past. That was back in, what was it, two thousand and eleven or twelve? And and correct me if I'm wrong, but we had the same wells online then as we do now, except for wells four and five. So that indirectly tells me that our six wells, once we have four and five back online. Were able to meet a five million gallon demand peak in two thousand and twelve. They should be able to meet it today, but once they back in service, right?
In two thou- in two thousand and seven, your max day was five point five, in two thousand and eight, it was five point four. And then two thousand and ten, it was five point three, and then it's slowly been dropping a little bit since that time, that time period.
Are there any wells online then that are not now?
Uh, I don't think so, Mike, right, yeah, no, there, this, you have the same wells, I mean, well six went offline a long time before that.
Right, so I'm saying is that we have the same source now as we did.
And, and you didn't have Penechak like you have today, because Penechak is now pumped, which gives it to you reliably at a million gallons a day. But back then, it, it didn't, you, you had the connection, but it would only flow by gravity and give you much less uh water.
Isolate part of the system.
Oh, yeah. All right, um, I don't know if there's any remaining questions that we've already compiled, um. I don't know, Keith, or do you have anything that you wanted to, to, to tell us that you haven't told us yet? Or you wanted to kind of see if there's any questions from the public that we might want to have you answer?
Be happy to take questions.
Any, any commissioners have any other questions at this point, or want to open up to the public?
I have one quick question, um that uh was a frequent question um in, in the forums, and that is uh why are we not tapping into the Merrimack River? And um just building a, a, a surface water treatment plant and basically just abandon the wells? And uh, I think our, there's two answers to it, for one, that um, uh the groundwater supplied. Uh, well water is, is by, by, by nature, or clean by nature, rainfall is by nature. And as such, generally cheaper to produce than to use.
Yeah.
Basically somewhat contaminated, even with natural contaminants and solids and bios and, you know.
Yeah.
Minerals, uh from, from the Merrimack River, for example, uh surface water treatment. Um, in general, is more expensive per gallon, but it's also, uh, we talked about that in the March meeting, I think, or February meeting briefing, when, when we brought it up. And uh, wasn't the number thrown out at about fifty to sixty million dollars to build a new plant?
It was, yeah, it, I don't have the numbers, but what did you say, fifty million? Yeah, it could have been that high. I mean, I know in two thousand and seven, it was close, certainly closer to thirty-five million, and that was fourteen years ago. And I don't have the two thousand and fourteen report in front of me, but I wouldn't be surprised if that was in the cost range. But we are looking at that to some degree, again, as you guys authorized us, as well number three, Dawn mentioned it, it's being replaced. Artificial recharge is being considered. We are doing another, another normalized cost curve for you to help you make those decisions. But back when Mer- when the surface water was looked at hard was two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen. And you had already had a significant investment into the groundwater system. And so that to make a complete switch, you were essentially replacing entire source. And at, and and maybe without using specific numbers, it was in order of magnitude higher. So instead of being five dollars a gallon, it was fifty dollars a gallon to get that in there, you know, at, you know, forty million, fifty million dollars. So the decision was to stay with the groundwater at that time, because it was a cost issue, it was a significant cost issue to, to go that route.
And considering the investment for the various uh treatment plants that we still, you know, have to make here. It probably would be interesting to run those numbers again.
And that's why I think you asked us to do it, because that was pre PFAS. So that, those decisions and those, those reviews were done before we had PFAS treatment on, on the well.
Although the river also carries PFAS, so there's still some PFAS filtration involved in that as well.
Right, and Keith, when you mentioned the, the, the uh, the cost of five to fifty gallons, uh fifty dollars a gallon. We're, we're talking about the cost in source capacity, that's not what the water would cost if it was delivered to our customers. I just wanna make sure if people are listening to that, they're saying, what are you talking about?
That was a, and and it, it's kind of a relative number, just to help in decision making and planning, but that, that's a capital cost. And a, a number we're running right there, so that if you were to invest a capital um of, of, you know, ten million dollars to build something. We just divide it by the amount of water we get, just to get a comparison, so that we can find a cost-effective supplier, or we can start looking at the more cost-effective suppliers. No, that's not the cost of the water, that's, that's the, that's relative to the capital cost of the project.
That, that's gallons per day of, of capacity of well.
Yes, 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 yes.
And I actually wanted to mention that quick, because we talked about the um Mitchell Woods well. One of the reasons why this board has not just waved that project through is because the cost per gallon produced is actually fairly high. The project in itself may not be that large of an investment, but in comparison to some other models that we're looking at with artificial recharge. And, and, and uh, um, finding replacement for wells three, um, high volume replacement for well three. The cost per, produced gallon is actually fairly high for Mitchell ones.
I think the denominator in that, in that ratio is the withdrawal amount, and it's a low number, so that's why it makes the cost higher.
The investment per gallon.
Right?
Yep.
But again, you know, we've, we've spent money on that well, getting it permanent, so maybe for it to be a peak shaving thing. So that we can have additional capacity, you know, we gotta look at that, but we gotta factor in. The other things that we're looking at, like Wolf mentioned, the artificial recharge and the well investigation in the Natick. Corridor, if, if we can find a higher yielding well in that location. Uh, and tie it into our treatment plant that we're designing at well two right now for PFAS treatment. I think the cost per gallon per day would be lower on that. But we gotta, we gotta have all of these numbers so that we can compare them all together, pick which ones make the more sense. And I think we have to do this, because once wells four and five come back online, we're gonna have that capacity back. That's gonna help significantly, you can get this restriction taken care of from Penechak, we'll have that filiary capacity. That we may only need to hit for a short period of time, and, and in the past, we haven't need to hit it at all. And, and, you know, instead of going ahead and forging ahead with designing all these treatment plants for more well sources. It may make more sense just to use Penechak as the emergency connection, because we don't have a whole bunch of. Treatment infrastructure that we need to use that water. So I think keeping that as an emergency connection is what we probably wanna do, so. All right, so uh, I'm not gonna prolong this any longer, but if you've got some questions.
Yes, I have a couple up, um, first of all, Kathy, she would like to ask a question.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just have a couple of things. With the signage that you guys have out right now, is it possible to make the signs clear for people instead of just putting a level? Like you have odd even watering, and the next sign that shows up is level three. People who don't have access to the internet or don't have access to your websites. They don't understand what the levels mean, so if you put no outside watering, instead of just the number, that would probably make it a lot clearer for people. That's just one suggestion that I have. Um, there was something that Keith said. Um, actually, I wa- I just wanna go to what everybody on Facebook calls your water police. Is there a possibility to save funds? Because I know that you guys pay time and a half for regular employees to be driving around to know house numbers and streets. For people who are in violation of the watering protocols. Is there a possibility, maybe this year, or something to think about for next year? Where you could actually put on a second shift, like a short shift from like three to eight, pay them a regular wage, cost savings number one. Is there a possibility that you could make that a part-time job, which would obviously have a lower pay scale? That's possibility number two. And if you're only having people that are driving around noting who the violators are. Why are you spending so much money keeping full-time employees doing it? Like if you hired a couple other employees, even if they were gonna be full-time employees, put them on the second shift. You're only paying them a flat rate, you're not paying them time and a half. If you hire part-time people to do it, you're only paying part-time wages, you're not paying time and a half. Does any of that make sense?
That, that does make sense, and I, I don't know if this is true or not, but like, for example, last year. Uh, when the must have been the irrigation demand wasn't quite as high. There's, there's almost no need for policing, is that safe to say?
It's safe to say, so we, we wouldn't, you know, obviously if we're out driving, we see somebody. Violated, we would stop, we're not out actively looking. So when we, when we went out this time around, we actually, it was more of a, um. To get the information out, you know, we were handing out the press release to say, hey, this is, this is what's changed. And it, it's not about the finding or anything like that, it was just to get the information out. And it, it wasn't time, in this case, to actually have somebody uh to hire a part-timer. It was, we need to do, we need to do it now.
Right.
Okay, Ron, could I just interrupt for one second? Um, this is, the odd even watering has been going on for thirty plus years. So you only make it applicable in the summertime. So if you have people driving around outside of regular hours, they're being paid time and a half. Whereas if you hire somebody who is part-time to do that exact same job, you're spending less money.
Ab- absolutely agree with you, last, for, for example, for last year. If the, and I'm not saying we don't police if we, if we don't have to. If so, you know, if we actively are driving down a road and see somebody water, we would, we would stop. But I'm not actively sending a group, the crew out looking for that, for this, like we were this year. Cause it's something that we had to stop right away. So on a year, like, again, for last year.
Yep.
The timing was right, as far as we had the, the weather, the rain, and, and it wasn't a need. I'm gonna do stuff that I'd rather have my crews doing than out policing. This was something we had to do.
Well, right, and we had to do it now, um, just, just with Kathy, I think uh legally, you know, that I know you, I think I know who Kathy are. But I think for the, for the, for the meeting minutes, we need to have your name and your address.
Catherine Hodge, forty-four Belmont Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
Forty-four Bel- Belmont Drive, New Hampshire, thank you very much, so.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And hi Kathy, by the way.
Hi Wolf, hi Dawn, hi Ken, hi everybody else.
Um.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking about that, because if you do a cost benefit analysis, it's obviously a lesser cost to hire somebody on a part-time basis to do that. Because Ron, I understand what you're saying, but I have a question for you. When you say that your guys are out doing their regular jobs, and if they're driving around the neighborhood, then, you know, they can see somebody who's watering on an off day or whatever. Can you explain to me why one of your employees was sitting at the outlet malls for forty-five minutes? Not doing anything, but when it was time for shift change, which I guess, I think you guys finish at three, he left at exactly three o'clock and went back to the building. So what was your employee doing sitting at the outlet malls from two fifteen until three o'clock on a regular workday? I could even give you the number of the truck, but I'd rather do that privately.
Could you please do that?
Yeah. I can give you the day and I can give you the truck number.
I will look into that. I, I don't know, they could have been doing paperwork, um, they could, they could have been up doing backflow testing and it was phone calls. I, I, I don't know, I can't answer that right now, but I would, I would like that information, I can check on it.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you guys for taking my question, I appreciate it, and thank you for doing such a good job with all the water restrictions that we're having.
Thanks Kathy.
Thanks Kathy.
Appreciate that.
I don't know how to check, well, let's go to this one. So I had a gentleman call in a legal voicemail that he would like to ask the board, since he can't wash his car, will we reimburse for car washes?
Nope.
Okay. Um, general consensus is we need to provide potable water. That's what we're required to do.
Well, you know, this brings up a good point, because I was kind of wondering if some of those, um, restrictions that go along with the level three may be reconsidered? I mean, how, how much water do we really use washing the car? I don't know, but someone could say, well, it took me four hours to wash my car, and it just happened my driveway drains onto my grass. So maybe it's, maybe those are in place.
Or is it, uh, resin?
A resin. And to go along with that too, um, we have a local pressure washing company that is, um, asking about if he could continue business. Um, homeowners, we have, they've called in and asked if they can still have a pressure wash. We've asked them to reschedule.
Right.
Um, that's coming from the other end, coming from the pressure washing company. He's asking if he can continue to do business in Merrimack.
I actually saw the, so, a couple of signs yesterday about pressure washing business and thought of that, and I said, that's a major hardship on them.
Well, and I, we, we have to look at why are we doing this? We're doing this because we, we, we need to control the majority of people doing one thing, and that is irrigating.
That's, that's my thought.
That's what it was on you, right? It's everything else we can do.
I mean, filling kiddie pools and things of a certain size is a problem, you know?
Um, I, no, and I'm, I actually already said, that's something that, um, I would much rather have, i- i- actually even a pool, if you have a pool, it's a one-time, you're gonna fill it, you're gonna enjoy that pool for, you know, months. So it's, that I don't have a problem with, or I, I shouldn't, we shouldn't have a problem with, that's a, a one-time use. And likewise with a kiddie pool, I'd rather see the kid, somebody fill up a pool with a hose, shut the hose off than, than playing under a sprinkler.
Yeah, so the hose is running for hours.
Exactly, if it gets warm, dump it, fill it up again, and, you know, enjoy that, you know, the, the child can enjoy that, that pool.
So can, can we, you know, this, this one, the pressure washing company, I mean, is that, could we make exceptions to the, the restriction on that?
I think we can. Um, but that would open it up as well to homeowners if they want to pressure wash, so. I think we can.
But, but you know, I, I don't think that's gonna be the big, big issue.
I was gonna say the same thing. I don't, I don't advise out there pressure washing every day all day. And I would read it, uh, do it daily, uh, ongoing watering.
It's the watering in the middle of the day when the sun's out at twelve noon and sprinklers are going, and the water's just evaporating, and, you know, they're ten thousand gallons every day. Uh, that's the type of thing I think we're trying to hit the in-ground irrigation. And, um, it's, it's funny, because I, I saw that sign yesterday, I was driving by and I saw a sign, pressure washing. I felt bad, I said that whoever's business this is can't do business in Merrimack right now.
We're not saying, you know, home people, for an example, they, they're out there, they'll water their, um, their, their flowers outside. We're not telling them to stop doing that either. So.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's something we can work on.
Do, do we want to make a motion on that now?
I, yeah, if we can do, make it official, just because that's at this date, because I've been, um, the homeowners have been told now, so, um.
I mean, I, I, I'll make a motion that we allow pressure washing to be allowed. Um, probably with a caveat of not to exceed a certain time. I, I, what I'm trying to do is prevent people from saying,
Oh, man, just pressure washing my lawn.
I'm pressure washing. You know, some, well, maybe we don't need to put a caveat on it, if it becomes a problem that people are abusing it, we can reconsider it, but I'll just make a motion now to allow pressure washing to be an allowable use in this level-three irrigation ban.
But, and I was gonna say, I think, I think we should make a motion to reword that, and then we should take a shot at it and you know, review what, what we can look at, because there's probably going to be some iterations.
Yeah.
I don't think we can.
Pressure washing my lawn.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Or, or cones, I wouldn't have, you know.
I would say pressure washing structures, um, of, just pressure washing businesses.
Pressure washing businesses are allowed to continue operation?
But not private people?
I think you almost have to run it up to residents.
I think you're gonna do, because then you're making people have to buy a pressure washing service, or they can pressure wash themselves. I would just say, just make it blanket, pressure washing is allowed, and, and I, I would even also put,
Home maintenance or something, right?
Put, um, car washing, I, I, I don't see the amount of car washing being an issue, uh, as, as long as it's not abused, but.
Can we, can we put something, uh, in, in the wording, that not open it in hose, it puts some sort of spray off, like you, it shut off when it's, when it's, you know, you're not spraying the car down, you, you put the hose down, it stops the flow.
Okay.
Why don't we make a motion where we say we're gonna reword, you know, reword, uh, the outside watering ban in a way that allows non-continuous use of water, uh, you know, over by, you know, by several days, we're being prohibited. And then we're gonna take it offline and come up with a language and, and circle that around. Because I don't, we, we can see it all night long.
Yeah, but this is gonna take weeks. I want, I want relief tonight. I, I, the customers want, this guy wants to do his business tomorrow, he doesn't want to wait for us to talk about it in two weeks.
And we can, we can definitely set up a pressure release for tomorrow.
I, I think, I mean, we're not gonna be, we're gonna be kicking this around for.
Well, normally we're pretty good with that, a couple hours tonight, tomorrow.
I, I would just say, open it up, I'll make a motion to open up to allow pressure washing and car washing. What?
Kinko's already included?
Yep, and also.
And that, that's the business pressure washing as well as homeowner pressure washing?
I'm, if you're gonna open it up, then I would say you have to, it might have been, you have to.
Yeah, I would allow for car washing to, um,
To do it, I think, wash the car and hit the side of the house at the same time?
I'm just, that, I'm just starting, when it comes to the car washing, is that something you want to follow, like the odd even kind of days, or you just, that kind of just open up? They don't have to pay?
Actually, that's a good point. That's actually a good point, even for pressure washing, if it's done on water, then.
Is it great?
Yeah. Good idea.
Yeah, that's cool.
Unless you're a business.
Well, yeah.
Unless you're a business, you can't really expect that they schedule your day.
Yeah.
Based on the house.
So, so homeowner allowable pressure washing and car washing on their own property based on odd even restrictions of their address? And pressure washing business, free, uh, rain to pressure wash any home in Merrimack on any day?
There's a question, I mean, just. But what, what is that word for rain?
Yeah, the ability to pressure wash their customers on any day. All right, it's a motion made by myself.
Kathy's got something to add too. Um, she's just like, with water stoppage, as Ron said.
With the, uh, with a, with a
Shut off.
Shut-off mechanism on the holes. That's being used for pressure washing, for car washing.
I don't know how to manage it.
Okay. So I, I made a motion, and you second?
Second it.
You know, second it. The other comments on that?
Amanda, did you get that? Okay.
Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye. That's good. I, I didn't, I understand what you're saying. I would have liked to kind of massage the, the language.
I just know that tomorrow we're gonna get another message about what else we're gonna do.
Well, well, if we do, we'll handle it, that's right, you know.
In a month from now.
I, I'm, I'm just, I don't want to put on this for two weeks.
Okay, you got some more questions too? I'm not sure how to do this, um, on the chat.
Oh, there's it.
Can you, you have a mouse over here, do you just click on it?
No, you, you, you need to turn on the chat, yeah. Uh.
That's, um, Kathy.
That's Kathy.
Public session.
That's, uh, all, all those are Kathy's comments about participating here, and we got that covered Kathy, correct? If not, please, please speak up. Who's MBM?
Mike, Kathy, under one.
Kristen Ayers, does Kristen have something that she wants to, um?
I did twice, so I'm not sure.
I know, I know. Do you have anything more written down, Jill, that you wanted to, um?
No, those were the two things, like, um, on the list.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Those kind of answered most of the general questions that we've had received.
Um, there's one.
That we can speak of.
There's one, one that's complicated. Um, because a lot of what I'm getting is, um, people calling me and asking why we're, why we are allowing all these apartment buildings and hotels and all that stuff, where it go up, and then, um, and I know, and the town had gotten a bunch of calls, and they had said, you know, MBD reviews it, and, um, they're finding that the water levels are set, the water pumping rates, and that we can satisfactorily provide water, so that it's, that's coming back to us, that we're improving in the town.
So, so the one thing I want to mention, and Keith kind of hit on this too, about when they assess the irrigation demands, I I wonder if there's any fallback on that. So, so if a new development proposes they're gonna use whatever, three thousand gallons a day of irrigation, um, is there any mechanism that we confirm that they're not overusing that? I know we don't permit them with a maximum allowable irrigation limit, but it wouldn't be a surprise to me if all of a sudden a company comes in that says, we're only gonna use this amount, but when you actually compare the winter versus the summer usage on their water bills, if all of a sudden it's five times the amount that they were gonna use. Or if a company says, we're not doing any irrigation, and all of a sudden, who's to know that they're irrigating their whole premises? We, we don't follow up on that. So I'm not sure how we would, how we would police that, or, or maybe when a new development comes in, um, maybe we make it a requirement on their approved plan, if they're saying they're not gonna irrigate with our water, that it's a note on the plan that says no MBD water will be used for irrigation, so that if we do find that they are irrigating in the future, at least that's something in the approval process, maybe with the planning board, that we can say, your permit, your permit with the planning board said you weren't gonna use MBD irrigation, so you know, you're restricted from using that. And, and I know we have an opportunity to review the planning board, um, and, and offer comments to the planning board. Maybe we can think about doing that in the future, if a company, development that's proposed says they're gonna use this amount of irrigation, or they're not gonna use irrigation, that, that, that becomes a, a a condition of the planning board approval, if, if we're able to do that? Do you think we'd be able to do that? I think we would be, yeah, I, I. And then the other reason.
And Dawn, Dawn, if I may, um, that, that's an important point, because knowing that we've done a lot of the reviews and assisted with them, there are, uh, developments that come in saying we're not going to irrigate, so that is the basis of some of those approvals, so it does work both ways, and I don't know that, you know, I've seen anything that says whether they are or they aren't now in reality. But there are developments that say they aren't going to be irrigating as part of the approval.
But we gotta be really careful with that, because some of those developments are subdivision, right? So they're gonna be sold off to third parties later on. Who's to say that they're not gonna hire somebody to come in and either put a permanent system in, or they just put the sprinkler with the hose, right? So that's obviously something then, that almost has to go into a.
Well, they would have to abide by that condition if they bought the, the lot.
Right, but how do you enforce it? They don't have to go on a, on a lien or something like that, or? And not on a lien.
On the board's cycle.
Yeah.
Would have to be enforced.
Yeah, but, right, but if somebody comes in five years later and puts an irrigation system with planning board, it's probably, I don't know, the irrigation system still needs to be permanent, do they?
No.
So, the agent would know.
But I almost envision something like, like we get for, uh, salt, um, the salt restriction, you almost gotta know who has the restrictions. And if they're, uh, uh, observed watering, then it's almost a, you know, it's, it's something would be a site violation, but it's on the site plan, we have to be a letter to the, uh, season's discount letter? Thank you, I, I totally lost, I wouldn't say time, what I was gonna say. To community development, to, to assist the system of a, uh, letter, so, right?
Right, it sounds like a workshop discussion.
Okay.
Um, the, the other thing that I was thinking about, um, since, since we're realizing that, um, the need of some for, for irrigation is, is exploding the, the cost for, for everybody else. Uh, we might need to look at that as far as our rates.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you, if you install at least a permanent irrigation system, that might be, be something where, where there's, there's an irrigation base fee or or it's a tiered rate system, right? It's a tiered, that's what I was saying, there's a tiered rate system, that's, you know, this is the average, and that's a different rate. Because it is kind of an un- unfair, um, cost impact for those people that, uh, don't irrigate, and there's quite a deal.
Right. And, and some people would say, well, it doesn't matter, because you only pay for the water you use, but if the rate goes up, because we gotta build more infrastructure to treat water, just so you can irrigate with it, the rate goes up. So the same water, the same people who aren't irrigating are using the same water they've always used, but they're paying more for it. So it does affect the non-irrigation people, so. Yeah, I, I know there are, uh, municipalities out there that do have a tiered system. And if you use over a certain basic allocation that you typically only need for potable water, if you exceed that, the, the amount that you exceeded is billed at a higher rate. And that's something that I wouldn't be against considering.
Uh, Dave actually mentioned, mentioned to me today that, uh, once it was, like Summersworth, Mass, or something like that, um, actually, from May to September, at least, there's no outside irrigation at all. They've put that into their, now, they don't, they don't allow it.
Wow. Let me take him to talk about, first question, not that I want to go that route, I'm just, in Merrimack, I mean, how many actual classified farms do we have? Even though there's the archer and the.
Do you have farms, yeah, there's, um, other places that have decent-sized gardens, I was gonna get the apple and stuff like that, too.
There, though, those are exempt, or not? I'm under the impression they should be.
A fireman, yeah.
They should, yeah, well, in the lives.
Right, so I was, you know, I don't want.
That's where you're going, I, I.
Yeah, I want to protect the, you know.
I'm not going after the farmers and the crop, you know, no way, that, that's vital to their livelihood.
Yeah, and it's a nice thing to have in town.
Just like the pressure washing, yeah, you know, he, he needs to live, that's his job.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That being said, if we, if somebody had a turf farm in town, I think we'd have to, if they irrigate, you, you'd have to let them do that as well.
That's business.
Right.
They grow grass.
Yeah.
Um, we got a full agenda now.
I know. So, are we done with the questions? Is there no more pending questions that have come in that anyone's aware of? I, I don't want to shortchange anyone who might have a question that.
Kathy just said, awesome, Dawn, great idea, great point, Wolf.
Okay.
And then as far as the water stuff, she said, thank you, less wasted.
All right.
She's all over the place.
So, so no one else is, uh, no one else is turning in, all right? So so no one else is uh, no one else is turning in, alright. If if you guys are ready to move on to back to our agenda with the hour and a half sideline here, but it was well needed, I think. Well deserved, um.
I would, I would like to suggest that maybe next month we look at the history of the tanks. And see if we can, or maybe prior to that, you know, maybe, yeah, I still have something we can do outside of the meetings.
So I actually had Dave uh screen, he actually was screenshotting the the. Tanks up and down uh over the last couple of weeks, so I actually have those, I can send them off to Keith, to you Keith, um. Yeah, and I can give them off to the board, well, I just got them today, this this afternoon, he was, I heard he was messing around with it, let's go back even further to when. This all started.
We don't, we don't get data points history on that, in the scale system?
We we do, we just, he was, he was taking screenshots and printing, so I, it's something I didn't have.
But I guess what I'm asking for is if it's foreseeable that we can deal with this weather. By allowing some irrigation, let's revisit that.
Yeah, I'm in that same, if we can loosen up, maybe go back to the five to eight o'clock at some point, not.
Or you just one irrigation window a day, you know, just five to eight period in the morning. Let's look at it, let's let's not speculate.
Alright, so we're getting back to the regular agenda now and thanks for waiting in patience there. Um, our friends with Underwood participating in the last thing, but. We're trying to get back on track, we're uh, we're at the point now to discuss capital projects, um. And we got a whole slew of them, so you can pick which ones you wanna go and start with at your leisure.
That's, Peter will take it from here.
Okay.
Hey guys. Wake up.
I was just, I just turned my video off cause I was, so I could catch up on a little work while I was listening to what was happening, so. So just do, um, I I'll start with four and five. And um, so I sent you in your packet, you should have a change order summary. Um, in there. Uh, the couple items that have just changed, we finalized the cost of organic material removal. And the credit for the well cleaning, so those are in there. And then there is a new item for uh fill material over the sewer trench. So at this point, we're at about seventy three thousand dollars. Um, and we have um, you know, there's been appropriated a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on that. So the one item that we are uh is outstanding is the uh time extension delay. Um, and then there there, they were initially noting that as a COVID nineteen. Uh, extension and also they're all pulling in the uh VFD delay, so we're reviewing that right now and. And negotiating with them on that one. Okay, the um, is there any questions on the change order form there?
Any questions, anybody?
Okay, so then just quickly running through what's what's happening on site right now, so the building is fully enclosed. And they are working on the inside, um, interior painting's ninety percent, plumbing is ninety percent, the electrical. Uh, they have been uh doing pretty good the last three weeks, they've been having like three or four workers. Uh, every day, you know, most most days today they had just one, but you know, on a regular basis, they're putting the effort in there now, that's. Um, you can see on the schedule that I also provided you that the electrical is the. Is on the critical path, so we gotta make sure that they, um, we keep pushing them to get the manpower there to get that going. The process piping is ongoing. Uh, all excavation work has been completed except for the tie-in work for well number four. Um, and speaking about well number four, the development has been done. Uh, the pitless adapter will be installed tomorrow. And then the pumping test for that well is actually being. It has to be scheduled after the fourth of July, so. The and the problem is, is fourth of July uh holiday, so. You can't run your pumping test through uh the holiday because you need to be bringing water samples to the lab. So uh, they would need to start that. Wednesday at latest Thursday of this week to be able to get everything into the lab before. Uh, the fourth of July weekend, and that doesn't look like it's gonna happen, so then you have to wait till right after it. Uh, to do that, so they're looking at doing that, um, starting it right after the uh. The holidays on the tenth. So. So that is, and we we talked about it at the last meeting, so that well is expected to be. Um, approved, you know, in the September timeframe, so when the plant does go online, it's gonna go online. Uh, with just well number five running. Um, the electrical delay, I sent an email, oh, you wanna go, have a question on that, yeah?
Maybe I'm missing something, but uh I thought we were still trying to. Shoot for a July window to go online. Now it looks like uh August, right?
Yeah, tha- that's the schedule you're talking about, yeah.
Right, but but how does this pan out, in in that email? Without, with the exception of the VFDs, we now have dates that are on or before the original shift date.
Right, that is the schedule, yeah, right, and tha- that is the schedule that um. That Penta provided us and there, they have requested a forty day extension, so. The contractual substantial completion date is July thirty first. And then they're asking for another forty days, what they're showing on the schedule is they need an additional twenty seven days. You know, to get out to that, to go on online August twenty seventh. Um, the schedule that they have noted there, uh. It notes a fifty day completion for the electrical work, which is on the critical path. But all previous schedules, they've noted thirty five days, so I'm trying to get an answer from them on why that. Um, why we needed an extra fifteen days on that one?
Well, I don't understand why we need an extension at all, because everything was tied up to the main distribution panel that was supposedly delayed in Mexico, which is now coming in a day early.
Yeah, so what what it was is the electrical started later, so that was supposed to be starting in. In April, when it really started at the end of May.
And why is that?
They're saying that it was COVID uh related. So they have some workers that have uh spouses that are in the uh medical industry. And uh, they have been not working, you know, cause. And and I'm not sure exactly if they have, if they're high risk people or or what, but I know they have had a problem with some of their staffing. And it's it's a tough thing to, um, you know, it's, you know, and we've been trying to nail down, how do you determine? If somebody requests a time extension, how do you determine what that is? It's kind of a little bit of a, of a vague thing, because. You know, how much are people not working, you know, how much is, you know, their staff reduced, how much are some of these components? Uh, being delayed, we were successful in getting them, you know, getting them quicker than what they wanted, so. This schedule was pushed at the last meeting, this schedule was another month out from this, it was actually going online. Like September twenty seventh, so we definitely did gain a month on that. Um, the site super from Penta still believes that it's gonna be online before that, but.
Not committing to it.
Yeah, they're not committing to it exactly, and the project manager is just trying to push it, I think he's trying to push it out there just to give himself, you know, some. Flexibility.
Well, that's kind of, I don't, I don't wanna give them the flexibility.
I know.
We give them that, they they're gonna slack off and serve somebody else and it's creeping harder, that's as simple as it is, um, and and I'm. My employer has delivered, is in the process of delivering a forty five million dollar project on time, despite COVID, with all the contractors involved. And it it can't be done if you want to, right?
Yeah.
So, um, and and I'm a little shocked that all of a sudden we we have labor issues. When prior to that, it was material issues that were being claimed, it just really seems fabricated.
Yeah, it's, we we haven't gotten all the, you know, the backup documentation of justification for this. When we asked for some stuff, the the responses we got back from them were very vague and I copied you on some of those emails, you know, before. And if you read the letters from Ewing, they really didn't say a whole heck of a lot, you know, it was a lot of general. Information and not a lot of specific stuff, you know, if they came back on that letter and said, we have a workforce of twenty people. We've had, you know, five of them not working at all, another four of them are reduced hours, you know, all that. That, you know, is justification of, you know, that they're. You know, they're putting some numbers to, you know, their their claim, but the what they put in the letters were, were, it was vague. Vague arguments, you know?
Small staff and some of the, some of the staff had this, didn't feel comfortable working in the atmosphere. You know, they they've got spouses that are in the uh healthcare field and.
Yep, exactly.
As we saw the email, he sent us in the letter from them.
But then the question is why didn't Penta look for another contractor?
Well, they uh, they they could, well, they could have done that, I'm not sure if you could have gotten another contractor, you know, and in that timeframe to. To get them, because then they would have to, you know, potentially, you know, put those submittals in and that type of thing, so, you know. But um, we are looking, you know, because that, you know, the electrical is on the critical path, you know, we we have, you know. You know, Joel, who was our site representative out there, he's constantly talking to the super out there to making sure that. We're getting a decent staff of uh, you know, people from the uh electrical subcontractor, because they are the critical path, you know. You know, the painter, we don't really care if he skips a couple of days or whatever, you know, we gotta make sure that the critical path items are being followed and that. Electrical is the critical path, so we wanna.
You know.
Pushing that.
Do we know if they're working overtime?
Uh, yeah, they are, they're doing, um, mainly they were doing uh four tens and a five on Friday. So they're doing, you know, they certainly could be, you know, forty five is extra, you know, they certainly could be doing more.
That's kind of what I'm. Pointing at, I mean, if if they're doing a five on a Friday, that means that they're heading home to wherever they live, right, on an early Friday. Do we need to have that done right now? Does that need to happen? I don't think so, and it it goes back to, if we grant them that extension, that means the liquidated damages don't stick, right?
That's correct.
Right, so. Maybe I don't have an understanding of public project, but um, I don't see a reason to grant them an extension. At least not until I would see a fifty, fifty five hour work week on site.
Pete, did, did John give, remember the last meeting, I'd asked him to put together a timeline, cause he'd mentioned different things like uh. The electricians, electricians couldn't have got in into the building because the building wasn't built. At a certain time, they were still doing footwork, and I just asked him to do a timeline up of. To to more justification other than just COVID related, uh, did did you get any of that or?
No, we did not get any additional information on that. Yeah, the last project, we were just trying to get, um, as Ron was mentioning, you know, that what they had for claim was. You know, a lot of vague information, so we, you know, the super out there said, well, you know, I can, you know, they couldn't get in for. You know, because the building wasn't ready, and I'm like, oh, okay, you know, so initially, the conversation initially got around to cause looking at their old schedules. And I kinda looked at a month, the month, the month, the month, and, you know, they were supposed to be starting work in in March, you know? And even in the April meeting minutes, if you look at the schedule, they still noted that they're supposed to be work, starting electrical work in March. So I'm like, oh, so why wasn't it, you know, if you're, if you're supposed to be there, you know, April, you should have had an idea of, you know. Some of the effects of COVID and stuff like that, it should have been adjusted, and you know, so I was trying to push them for some sort of. You know, backup for their claim, and then, you know, the conversation developed as as Ron mentioned, you know. They couldn't get in for certain reasons and all that, I said, well, then document that is, you know, and then that will help your claim, but all the. Uh, vague statements is very hard to say, oh, you know, and if they de- deserve a time extension, it's like. So with all that vague information, how do you determine if it's a ten day extension, twenty day, thirty, forty, fifty, or whatever it is, you know, it's it's, you know. It's like just grabbing a number, you know?
This is frustrating because I know I saw this coming a year ago when we started talking about the schedule. And we all saw this coming and we 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 took our action to compress the schedule and have the masons work through this, through the winter and. We spent the thirty thousand dollars extra, you know, it's like, I feel like MBD did what we needed to do. To, and we paid for it.
Right.
And and and, you know, and it, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if if it's just the electrical work that's holding the whole thing up at this point, or. Is there other things beside that?
Yeah, if you could, do you get a color copy of that schedule? Yeah, so then you can see the red line as the um, is the critical path, so, you know, that is, you know, even if. You know, even if that pop back, um, the other item that's along with that is left to go in the vessel room, so yeah, that that. Pull back another two weeks, it's, you know, looks like it would still be on the critical path, you know, so that is the, that is the item right there.
What about paving, that?
Yeah, we, yeah, we could care less about paving, you know, like that, you can have a plant, you know.
You can still put a plant online with no pavement, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's why it's not on the critical path, it jumps right down, so once electrical is done, it jumps right down to startup.
So what's the rest of these critical path item after startup?
And then, well, then it's turn the system over to the um, to the district. And substantial completion, so you met that date, and then they have, I believe the contract gives them another forty five days after substantial completion to. You know, take care of everything else, and then that's what the punch list and move out is, yeah.
So it's really, it's really, the critical path is really the electrical and then it jumps down to.
Yeah.
Startup, cause we can't. Up until the electrical is done, right?
Yeah, electrical startup, and then you have the system, and that's, that's what you want, you know, the rest of it. You know, if it takes them ninety days to do the rest of it, I don't think you really care, you just want the water, you know?
So. Are you asking us if we need to make a decision on extending the contract tonight or uh?
No, could, well, I don't think we, we don't, you know, they have a, they have a claim in there, they, it was initially seventy days that they were asking for. Seventy, yeah, then, okay, and then, and then when we went through all that electrical, um, you know, helping them out, you know, and and getting. You know, changing the, or relaxing one of the requirements on the transformer, and then they were able to get the LP panel in another place. All of a sudden, that got the components on site another thirty days ahead of time, so they reduced their seventy day claim to forty days. And that's where it's at right now.
Let's look at this, so, if this schedule is correct, their orig- their original commitment to this project was June, July. And half of August, that's eighty days, right?
Uh, what's good, are you looking at?
Well, item two seventy nine, two seventy nine, electrical, went from beginning of June till middle of August, that's eighty days. And they're asking for a seventy day delay for an eighty day scope?
Yeah, he only has a, actually, it's only a fifty day, if you look in the duration column, it's a fifty day uh duration.
Weekends and stuff like.
But I think he's looking at it saying, well, it it is duh, and the, you know, the duration of the, of the task didn't, well, it's changed now. Because as, even if you look at last month, it was still thirty five days, so he actually added fifteen days to the duration. But what he's also asking or noting is that that task item started later than it was supposed to. Flat task item was supposed to be starting in March originally, and then.
Well, has has, have they put us a notice that we're running late with allowing them to do their work?
Well, that's what they did, you know, they kinda did it, it was all sudden, it kinda got dropped in our lap, and you know, and at the end of April. Um, and the April first, the few days of May is when they gave us the first notice that, hey, we're having. Um. You know, problems getting some. you know, problems getting some components, you know? And then at that point, okay, we're, we're starting to look at things. And then, then they, you know, started coming on and that's when they, you know, in May, they noted that the COVID issue and they needed a time extension and all that. But if they're noting that in May, you know, why, why wasn't that noted in April? When, you know, if, if the COVID issue really, you know, I don't, you know, you don't know what exactly when everybody, you know, it started affecting people, but they were closing things down in March, obviously, you know? So, um, you know, I don't know why it took so long for them to get to us to let us know that there was a delay. You know, so also we're getting into, say, the, the first of May and we're finding out that, you know, there's delays. And then, you know, with, it, it doesn't, it's, it's almost too late, we're, you know, we're trying to catch up. And it's like, we lost all that time that they could have given us to make, make some, you know, you know, changes in approach and, and, and forcing them to do different things.
Yeah, so for me, five hours a week is not overtime. So they, they pitched muscle, uh, but to put that back into it, I wouldn't approve signing off on anything.
Do, do you have an update on the VFD? Cause in your last email, it still said no new info.
Yeah, so that no new, and then I just checked with Joel today and I said, I asked him, I said, is the VFD on site? And he goes, no, but everything else is. So, well, they still have plenty of work to do, even if that, you know, that VFD was supposed to be, I don't, I don't have that right in front of me. I think the VFD was supposed to be shipped on the twenty-third or twenty-second, right? So I think it was supposed to be shipped today or tomorrow?
Supposed to be six seventeen original date.
The VFD?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that's not on site. But they have, they have, you know, even if that comes in right after the fourth or something like that, they have plenty of work to do in the next two weeks that they don't. Hooking up the VFD is nothing, you know, just, you know, stick it in there and ins and outs, you know? Now, the big thing is, you know, getting that LP panel in there, getting all your runs into that, you know? Um, in, you know, into, into the SCAD, the RTU system with, with all the control wires, that's a lot, that's the, the bulk of the work.
Yeah. My, my question was, do we have a timeframe that we expect the VFD to come in? Or are they gonna come back and say it won't be in till September or something? Yeah, how, how do we know they're not gonna say that?
That we don't know that from what I, you know, when we, at, at the last project meeting, they said no change in the VFD schedule, so. That project meeting was what, a week and a half ago, Ron? Something like that?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, yeah, this, this, this Thursday will be two weeks, yeah.
So as far as we know, we still would have expected to see it on the seventeenth?
No, ship date.
Well, that's the ship date.
That, that's the ship, that's the ship date, yeah. So, you know, they, they, they were, been telling us like ship, ships a week, you know, so we should be seeing that this week.
Alright.
If I could jump in for a second too, um, you guys, um, have the authority to approve the change orders, only you. And, uh, you know, we make a recommendation to you and the contractor makes a request. Um, what I had asked Peter to do was, was knowing that they were down to a forty day request, said, well, what, what do you think's reasonable? And, you know, Peter struggled with that, but went back and said, hey, Penta, you know, we gotta go back to the commissioners and convince them that any time is, that you're asking for is legitimate or fair. And so Peter did ask them, you know, we might, Underwood might feel comfortable making a recommendation to the district of maybe up to twenty days. Um, and even then, it's just some sort of a, you know, right now, it's just kind of a gut or, or judgment. Cause as Peter points out, we don't have the backup. They said, no, we want forty. Um, so I think a way to move this along is, I'm hearing from you, Pete's hearing from you, you're very reluctant to give any time. Um, had they come back and said, you know, we can work with twenty, maybe we would be moving on. Not saying we would, but, you know, we might have had a different discussion. But my suggestion is to get, I don't think we need a vote from you, because ultimately you get, you're the only ones who can sign these change orders. But get a feeling from you that somewhere between zero or twenty days is what you're comfortable doing. And then we would just ship that change order off to them in written form and say, you know, we've agreed on all the dollars. The dollars have been agreed to. And, uh, it's just a time issue now, here's the change order and here's the time we're willing to recommend, um, to the board. Whether it's zero, whether it's ten, or whether it's twenty, it certainly shouldn't be any more than that. And then, and then we'll see where it goes. But I think that's, that would be my suggestion, just in order to move this off. I would like to stay at our position, meaning, you know, yours and Ron's, for what, what time we would feel comfortable with.
What's new about this is in the end, this is a monetary decision on their end. Overtime that they could, or additional resources that they could hire and bring on board, um, and overtime that they could spend, is gonna dig into the margin, right? Simple as that, so they don't wanna do that. This board already spent additional money to make this happen before the summer's over. And we're not getting anything for it. And Penta is fully aware of that, has been aware of that. What I'm also hearing is that it seems that the contractor is, you know, it doesn't seem like Penta, I, I don't know, maybe I'm hearing this wrong, but it seems like the, the tier two contractor, the electric, the electric contractor is not really being scrutinized by Penta. Because Penta just turns around and says, oh, those guys are waiting, asking for seventy days. Okay, now they're waiting for four days, but it, it doesn't seem like they're putting any pressure on their own contractor. And Penta is the general contractor, right?
Correct.
Well, I mean, that's their role to put, you know, to put the pressure on the subcontractors. And why do we have to worry about this at this point, uh, when they're not even substantiating to their own general contractor what the reason for the delays? So if, if they're telling us that, that we screwed their schedule because we couldn't, you know, we, we couldn't have them start with their work until whatever, it is May or something like that? Or instead of March, I guess then we're gonna eat it, right? And, and that's, that's a fair point, but just throwing out numbers and, and they're not, um, substantiating them is not satisfactory.
And not only that, I mean, we, you know, this is why we wanted this plan on before the peak of the summer hit.
That's right.
Be, because we didn't want, if, if Wells four and five are on, we'd be buying a heck of a lot, maybe no water from Pennachuck at all. How many tens of thousands of dollars are we gonna get billed for the next, for, for the last month of Pennachuck water?
I, I don't know yet, I, I haven't.
It's gonna be more than it was, it's gonna be more than sixty grand, cause it's probably more water than we used. It was sixty grand two years ago for like fourteen million gallons, so.
It will wheel it through.
Yeah, it's, it's still additional, you know, so we're, we're taking more financial loss on this. So, you know, that just substantiates Wolf's position and my position, but.
Well, my suggestion would be then, then we ship the change order off with a letter with all these reasons. And there's two primary ones right there, you know, the district stepped up, paid extra to get some winter conditions paid for. And, uh, and now we're in a position of purchasing water elsewhere that's costly. And we put a, I guess I'm hearing, we don't wanna give them any time in the change order. Um, and say, this is the direction we've been, we've been given at this point. And, uh, and we'll just have to sort it out following that. But that does keep the pressure on, it does keep the opening to the contract terms, which includes liquidated damages. Will in the end, they have justification, maybe, um, but that's gonna put it in their court to provide it. Cause we've already told them that they have not given us what we think is adequate justification for time extension.
And I think that's what it boils down to. If they give us valid reasons that are credible, I don't think anybody's gonna complain. But, uh, just throwing out a number to make it comfortable on their end and have us pay the extra money for buying more Pennachuck water and, and, and sitting here and having all of these discussions about how we can conserve water during the summertime is, it's putting the problem on our end where it shouldn't be, because we didn't cost us at least after our knowledge.
Okay, well, we'll do that. Peter, that makes sense, then we'll, we'll get it out tomorrow, we got the direction and, um, they'll still have to get the job done and, and, uh, and that'll force the, force the issue, force the issue on their end.
And just, Ben, you guys, I know you're in a heck of a position with this.
Right, yeah.
And we really appreciate you kind of advocating for us. And I don't, I don't admire you being in that position, cause I've been in that position myself, it's not fun. Appreciate what you're doing for us and sorry you have to be in the middle of this.
Well, that's okay.
You know, if there's, if there's a job for the meeting, project meeting, like we had four weeks ago, six weeks ago, I have no problem coming there and.
It is the next one, it's on the, the third Thursday, was it?
Yeah, so I thought you were gonna be at the, the last one, Wolf, so you weren't there. So I decided to be the bad guy and I was, uh, taking your position and. But we just, we had that one, um, so that was, um, the ninth. So our next one is gonna be, it's the second Thursday of the month, so it's gonna be right after your commissioners meeting. But at that point, it's, you know, we really gotta push them now, because we're almost gonna be too late.
That's right.
At that point. But the next one, just so you have it on your calendar, it's, it's, it is July ninth is the next meeting.
And this is helpful, I think, just hearing from you, you guys at the board meeting on that position and these arguments, I think will, you know, is, is helpful for us, so.
Well, I think the letter, that the letter we put together and send out to them tomorrow, you know, you know, we'll note that, you know, you know, they're extending their duration fifteen days, you know, they need to put the overtime in there, we're, you know, we're, you know, you can put more labor on it, we really put the pressure on Penta and stuff like that, then they'll turn around and put the pressure on, you know, Ewing, and then hopefully we're gonna see results and get more people out there, so we can, you know, cut that critical path, you know, line item down and get, you know?
Worst case, send them a link to this meeting and tell them, uh, seven forty-five PM.
Yeah.
But we would have to look at the, the counter now, whatever, but, uh, they can into our little tantrum.
So I know I mentioned this before, but there's no resources that are on the booster station that they can pull and use at, uh, Wells four and five, right? Cause it's.
We took, we did bring that up and I think due, just due to the scheduling of that one, where they're essentially waiting for the, the, uh, the skid to come in, there's really not a lot of benefit or there wasn't much to trade there.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we did ask.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, thank you guys.
I guess we beat that one to death, the, um, do you, you wanna move on to, uh?
Seven, eight?
Up to you, seven and eight, two and three, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, seven, eight. Um, so, um, the award, we're all ready to, to move ahead with award, but that's being postponed until district meeting and until the warranty issue is resolved. So, uh, the warranty issue is, is the one item that we really, you know, that like to discuss. So I just kinda quickly run through that again. So, uh, we based the warranty on the RSSCT that we had performed by EPS. Uh, Avoca requested some water, they ran their own RSSCT and they came back with a lot, um, shorter runtimes than we did. So, and they noted in, laid in the bidding process that, uh, they weren't, you know, wouldn't be able to honor the warranty that we had noted in there. So we decided not to make any changes during the bidding phase, because, you know, we, we wanted substantiating data for that. So what they, what we agreed to was, we would send them additional water, they would run a second RSSCT, which they did. And, uh, then they came back with results that were very similar to their first one. And just to, uh, have a better understanding of the, um, of the different tests, so, um, EPS runs a, runs the RSSCT with a slightly different method of how they size the, the columns, you know, so you're going from your full scale system, and then you gotta scale it down to your RSSCT, you know? So there's two different methods to, to do that. EPS uses one and Avoca uses a second one, okay? Um, and we're, you know, EPS feels that they have their, uh, results by using the method that they use correlates very well with, you know, actual data that you, you know, will get out of your plant afterwards. Uh, UNH, we've, we talked to them, they concur with that. Avoca feels that their method is better, and they also noted that, that method that they use typically yields uh, more conservative, you know, values. So obviously if I'm them, that's, that's the method I wanna use, you know? So, we're at a, we're at a point right now where Avoca, uh, gave ICC, who's the contractor for seven and eight, they gave them a purchase order and on that purchase order, they noted on there that they could not meet the warranty. So ICC is reluctant to sign a contract with MVD, knowing that their vessel manufacturer, you know, it's, cause if he signs a PO with them, you know, the vessel manufacturer is not honoring the warranty there. So now it's gonna be on, on his nickel to, you know, if it does not meet it. So, we were discussing that, uh, Keith and I were discussing that today. And what we were looking at doing is having, having a work session with you for multiple reasons, you know? Um, one is, you know, to pull in Avoca and ICC, so we can, you know, have conversations and everybody can be part of that. And, you know, understand that, cause we need to move it, move ahead with this fairly quickly, because once the, once you have the district meeting, then we would like to move ahead with award as quick as possible, but this thing is gonna be holding up award. So we're looking at having that meeting with them. Um, they can express their points of view. And then we would, you know, ha, you know, meet afterwards, talk about that. But the other thing that we wanna talk about at that meeting is when you, what's, what's the, the board's decision on how, when to be changing out? You know, the media and stuff like that, because that's gonna affect a lot with, um, your O and M costs and that type of thing. So I know we've talked a lot about that and, and thrown around some things, but it, I think you, you know, you, we kinda need to get closer to a decision on that one. So we thought we could kinda wrap all that, you know, sort of.
I could just jump in for a second too, Peter, I think.
Yeah.
Um, let's, so, we're, remember, it's not a, it's not a performance issue in terms of reduction of the PFAS. It's a performance issue in the life of the carbon, so that's what the whole warranty is about, just to make sure everybody understands that. But, um, the, 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 the part that we're struggling with is that the warranty is so, so much significantly higher at Wells four and five. And we all know it's a different, different water, different water quality, different circumstance. But we're, what they're offering now is about a third of the warranty they offered for four and five. And, um, it's about less than half of what we had bid for seven and eight. So our concern is if it's real, if they're, if they're correct, that the, the reduction in the bed volume life is, is gonna be as they predict, then it's really an operating cost to you, it's just an added, added cost. So we wanted to get them in the room, we still have time, you don't have your, um, you don't have your annual meeting till the sixth or the seventh, I think, which can't award it until then anyway. So, um, before we made any final decisions, we wanted to get them in the room together. And so that's what Peter's gonna set up for the, um, probably Tuesday of next week.
Yeah, we're looking at, yeah, Tuesday, the thirtieth, if that date works with you, for you, uh, the district.
And so we're really, we're just really, um, just saying we need, we need some more time. And I think the right people from the district need to be in that, in that meeting.
Is it that for the afternoon sometime or later afternoon or something?
Yeah, we're looking at two o'clock or so.
And then I think what we're saying is that as a result of that meeting, if we find a, an outcome that everybody can, uh, is comfortable with, um, I, I, I think what we would do is look to you for a final recommendation to authority award either at a subsequent meeting. Um, I, so I assume it's gotta be noticed, or maybe it can be done at a pre-meeting to the annual meeting. So we really haven't lost any time, um, as long as we can award right after the annual meeting.
Yeah, I couldn't do, uh, the Monday or Tuesday of that week, I'm in, I'm out of state at a customer site. Wednesday work?
Is that the first?
Yeah. How was your schedule on the first, Keith?
I'm, I'm around, uh, the only day that's bad for me next week is Thursday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gone, I'm gone Thursday to Monday.
I mean, it can be, it can be, I don't think it ha, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting if you're, if you're, um, or we, we can do an online meeting, obviously, so you don't have to be local. I assume that's how we'll do it anyway.
I was thinking about that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, uh, yeah, twenty ninth and thirtieth, I'm, I'm all day. So.
First you work, though, you think?
First.
First work with you guys?
It, it should work with me, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll confirm that with the uh, with the contractor and Avoca tomorrow, I'll send out, I'll send out email tonight on that. Uh, I'll call, call you guys on that, see if you can. Is that you, Mike?
Not me.
Well, your face popped up right after that.
I just, uh, I was wondering what it was. Sounded like a pencil sharpener, how about that? Thirtieth, thirtieth is fine, if you want to do thirtieth is fine, sorry. Those were ten of the days, unless you're wise.
Alright, so the thirtieth works?
Okay, thirtieth at two, okay, yeah, so I'll, I'll send something out to the contractor and, and Avoca, just to. Confirm that.
Pete, do you know Lynette, if Lynette can make that meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to her already.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so is that uh, pretty much it on seven and eight?
Yeah, that's, that, that's it on seven and eight, yeah.
Then uh, well, two and three?
And then, well, yeah, so, yeah, well, two, well, there's really just well, two for us, I know well, you know, well, three is, is moved along with some stuff that Emery and Garrett is doing.
Yeah.
But our, our side of it is uh, the well two, where we're still shooting for that sixty percent submission of drawings by the end of June. So, um. The RSS C T that we are doing with EPS is a little over halfway done. And Avoca is running their RSS C T, but uh. We do not have any results yet on that, so I'm kind of interested how those two compare, based on our. You know, our well seven, obviously, those uh, have not compared very well, so kind of curious to see what we're doing there. And we're gonna be a pretty far, you know, the good thing is on that one, we're way ahead of schedule where we were with other, the other pr- uh, projects, so. Hopefully, we, you know, if we do have something different, we can straighten that out uh, beforehand, so. So that's all we had with well two.
I know we had that stump dump issue that we were gonna come back to, it dumped, we probably got any.
Yeah, I thought the stump dump, you were uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it away.
Yeah, I, I fully understand, I'll do that. Just pointing it out to, let it fall off the back burner.
No, I just, made a note of that here before you.
I think it's an action item, so it's gonna keep coming back at some point anyway, so.
So, has that been?
They haven't though. Um. Any other questions on well two? Alright, so uh, just Turkey Hill Booster now, I guess, anything to report on that?
I don't, we don't really have anything new to update on that one, we're still waiting for the skid.
Okay. Um, in Mitchell Woods, I think this was put on there. Just cause I was um, wondering if with this, you know, irrigation ban and uh, being sure if. We're really faced with. Man, that's gonna be a real thing that persists. Does it make sense for Mitchell Woods, for us to pursue that well development now that it's, it's already permitted from what I understand? It's just a matter of designing a water and power line down there and um, access and. Um. Some pH adjustment and chlorination whatnot. Um, I guess the question I had is. What, what, what would be the timeframe, the intent I'd be doing this, or we'd be thinking of doing this would be. So that it would be online by next summer, so that we're not still here next summer in the same boat with. Not enough water in the middle of the summer and um. I just, I'm trying to get a timeframe, what do you guys think it would take to get that well online?
Mike, what? Mike, if you wanna take that one?
I'd like to wait until we have all the other comparisons we can make to know if there's a. A better source that we can pursue in the Natick Brook area, but. Um, just, just to get an overall timeframe on that, what, what, what do you guys believe timeframe would be to get that water?
I hadn't really kind of on a timeframe on that in this meeting, but just, you know, I, I do know that right now, alls there is is an eight-inch casing there, so there isn't a completed. Typical-sized municipal well. Already in place, so it's not, it's, it's more than just a connection, you also have to get in there and. And put in a bigger casing, so there's, there's some well work that has to happen too. So when you consider design and construction, I think getting it online by next summer would be. Would be a challenge, um.
Yeah. Would there need to be another pump test done and everything, or is that all done?
No, no, the pump test has all been done, the well is permitted for three hundred gallons per minute, or four hundred and thirty-two thousand gallons per day. But there's also a, a, a total, you know, for the year, so the, the idea of that well, as you know, was more of a peak shaving well, it could be used for three or four months. Uh, at, at that rate, and then would probably even rested, you know, uh, and, and ready for the next summer season.
Alright. I don't know if anybody has anymore. Anyone to offer on that or anything, but.
Jamie, I know, Dawn, you had asked me about the schedule on it, so we're, we uh. We're gonna, we'll get you that, we'll follow up with more on what a realistic schedule or what we think is a. Re- realistic schedule.
In terms of your workload, is this something you think you can handle, or is, we, we need to look to somebody else to get the design done, I know you got a lot of stuff going on with us right now, so.
Yeah, you're, you're keeping us busy, and I mean, what I'd like to do is talk to um. G D A and see what else is left, as Mike said, there are a couple loose ends there. And then if it, it depends on the timing, I mean, and it depends on who in our office is doing it, but if, if, if it gets to the point on that, you know, we, we just can't deliver it. You know, we'll, we'll let you know, we'll just make sure that, the important thing is you guys get it online when as fast as possible, if you choose to go that route.
What do you think? Okay, you have to shower. Alright.
So we'll check, we'll check with Jamie, um, Mike, um, and I know he's on vacation for the next couple weeks, so, but he might be hard to reach, but Dan might be able to fill some, some of the gaps.
Dan is actually probably a better source on that well, I think he has more direct information, you know, he may not on schedules and so forth, but uh, but yeah, let me work with Dan on that. And get a realistic schedule together if we get back to, to the board. Um, so you have that information.
Okay. And I know the next thing on the agenda was uh, with Emery and Garrett to talk about the report they did on well six, but one of the questions while I have you guys here. Um, certainly we know is one-four dioxide in well six. Um, can you remind me what treat process removes one-four dioxide, if you remember off the top of your head right now? I, I can't remember, I don't, I know it's not just carbon, there's, there's some other process that needs to be done, isn't it?
Yes, it's, it's um, it's an advanced oxidation process uh, in conjunction with UV light, is, is the. The method that is generally used for one-four dioxide. And I'm not tied in with the project we're doing in Dover, but Keith, do you know? Um. Oh, I don't know if he's, do you know if that's what you're, you're going ahead with in the Dover projects, what, is an advanced oxidation process or a one-four dioxide?
It is, yeah, yeah, we're using advanced oxidation, I think they found that um, carbon or resin had a small reduction, but it was really the, relying on the advanced oxidation process for it.
And what is that, net filters, or is that a settling basin, what is that?
Um, it's, it's actually a chemical feed with, and I, you know, I'm not terribly familiar with this, because it's not done all that often, but you know. You can check in with Dover, but it's usually feeding a hydrogen peroxide as, as, as the oxygen. Uh, in conjunction with UV light, uh, I can't tell you the exact process of how that is, you know. Getting rid of or destroying the one-four dioxide, but that's, that's the general process.
Yep, that's right.
So you, you don't think there are any pressure vessels involved in that?
That I'm not sure of, Dawn.
I think there are, they're small, but there, but there's um, there's not much of it really.
That's where I'm going with this, is um. We, we've got iron and manganese that are going through the roof at well seven and eight, and we've got green sand vessels over there. Is there any potential in taking well seven and eight offline, piping well six over? And using those green sand vessels for carbon filters? So that we can actually get more flow. Capacity from well six than we have from combined seven and eight? I, and I don't know how, what time we have left on the, on the life of the green sand, probably, is probably a good time left, but. Ryan, weren't you saying you were kind of worried about uh? Is there a need that we need to possibly change out some of that green sand at some point?
I think so, probably sooner than later, um.
Yeah.
We had a, from startup, we had a. The P A generalized was messed up or something like that, it's saliva plating out in it, so I, I think. Whatever. We'll be having to change it out sooner than later, I'd like to do start with one first, see how we, make, make out with it, and then. Do the rest, but.
I mean, my point is, we, we've got, we know we got iron and manganese issues at well seven and eight, and it takes a big system that we have there now of green sand vessels. To remove the iron and manganese. Is there a way, if we brought well six in, which my understanding doesn't have iron and manganese? Can we avoid having all the green sand vessels? And use that, use the vessels for additional carbons? I just don't know what room it would take to make well six. Uh, to remove the dioxide. This, this, just my thought, you don't have to answer right now, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but that, that's my idea, if. Think about it when you're.
Yeah, and Dawn, I'll add that well six has always been looked at to some level, because it's still a good source, it certainly has a couple issues, but. At some point, I think to your point, um, those issues will end up being less than some of the other issues we're now facing, so. We were, we were close to pulling the trigger on some other uses uh, with well six, so it, it's probably worth looking at again.
Yeah, and, and, and I should point out, uh, the original reason well six was taken offline was because of volatile organic contamination. Um, you know, T C A and T C E. And there was, uh, Emery and Garrett did a bunch of pump testing on that to show that if pumped at a rate, I believe it was around six hundred gallons per minute, that you weren't impacting. The plume that was originating from Meramec Metals. This, a number of years have gone by, I don't know what the current status of that is, um, well six was the biggest M V D well at one time, at, at fifteen hundred gallons per minute.
Right.
Um, but it's, it, it was gonna be pumped at a reduced rate because of the potential of pulling stuff in, so I, I just want, I didn't know if you knew that history, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I didn't remember it was a six hundred gallon per minute limit that, you know, so obviously, we'd wanna pump it higher than that. But again, if it's VOCs and we have carbon there, I would imagine that would pull the VOCs out, but then we'd probably extend, reduce the likelihood of carbon, so.
And you'd have to see whether that stuff is amenable to absorption on the carbon, I, I know we were looking uh, in a past lifetime uh, at aeration for well six. Uh, to remove those volatile organics, and that seemed like a viable option at the time, so. That, that is, you know, that's a possible treatment step for that, if it's an issue, I don't know if it's an issue anymore.
It's, 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 it would be very much like what we are doing in Dover, because we're dealing with the one-four dioxide, iron and manganese and P F A, so we have, we have uh. Green sand filters, carbon, and advanced oxidation in the plant in Dover, so there may be some similarities that we can draw from, if we wanna look at it further over there in well six, seven, and eight.
Yeah. Okay. Right, I think that's probably all we have for you guys, right, I don't think there's anything else on here that um. Kinda thinking maybe might want a table, I don't know, three.
Yeah, that was more like for you guys to take, get familiar with it, um.
Right. Alright, um, if we wanna let Underwood.
I think we're good, yeah.
Thanks for uh, putting all the time in, guys, I know it was a bear.
No, that's good, I, we, thank you for your time and.
Yep.
Participation, yeah, appreciate it.
Alright, have a good evening.
Alright, so long, you guys.
Guys. Alright, so, this is uh.
FYI update from. Here. Um, it's. So that you know that. About four.
Yeah.
So, can I jump in?
Does this change order, is this something that's gonna preclude Jamie from moving forward on anything?
Yeah, you just wanna put that in front of you, um, just because they are changing the. The pump tests from.
Oh, this is well four.
Seventy-two hours to a hundred and twenty hours for well four, yeah, I sent that over after the packets had gone out.
What drives the change?
Um, the Hampshire D E S requirement, instead of, they were gonna do a seventy-two hour pump test, and D E S is requiring them to do a hundred and twenty hours.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
The, the, the increase is only thirty-eight hundred, right, is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, but if it's coming straight from the E S, why would we?
Exactly, no choice.
Yeah.
So motion to move forward with that. Uh, for Amanda, motion to move forward with the change order. Number one.
Yeah.
February and Garrett, project number thirty-three dot, excuse me, zero, zero, eight, three, zero, five, two, dot, zero, two. Dated February twenty-four, twenty-twenty.
Change order is June twenty-second.
That's right, thank you, dated June twenty-second, twenty-twenty. Dawn's trying to confuse me. Um, increase of the change order of um, over thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Right.
Uh, due to D E S requirement for increased pump. What is it?
Pump test duration.
Pump test duration, second.
Motion by Will.
And financed, financed by.
I believe this is coming out of capital reserves as well, so maybe not add the additional.
Caveat.
Yeah.
To come out of capital reserves?
Yeah.
Yeah, second.
Is that done, Amanda?
Alright.
Let's do it.
Any other questions, comments, call of motion, those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four, zero, zero.
That was the fastest motion there was.
Yeah, wait till you see the next one. Alright, so, will um, I think this, this whole thing about M V D six was just to uh, if we had questions for Jamie or something like that?
Yeah, I wonder if having questions before he presents, to give us some time to adjust it.
I, I think we can table that.
Take a look at the next item.
Just results.
Yeah, it's not gonna hold back any time, projects or anything, so um. Uh, so then next item would be item number four, Board of Commissioners Review Annual Meeting Progress Process for July seventh.
Looks good.
And I know we have um. This list, so again, we're not moving these, right, we're just talking.
Um, there, everything's all done, I mean, this is just gonna be your schedule, but in the meantime, and I'm trying, I was trying to get it done for the meeting. Um, the more is the, is the actual agenda, but we did do um, kind of a blow-by-blow last year too, so we'll redo that. And who's gonna speak to us, so it'll reflect these, but it'll be just written out.
Awesome.
And I'm gonna send it off to Brian McCarthy to review real quick, make sure he's good with everything. So I'll shoot, that'll come out to you with this, you'll have everything that you need for the meeting. Seeding's all set, I'm meeting up with Tom too, so this week to go over the location and push up the logistics.
Do you have all the COVID uh, social distancing stuff, squareway and, and all that stuff?
Yep, Tom, well, I mean, the town's doing their, their election tomorrow, um, we talked to Paul McCalle, they made those for the supervisor checklist and all that, so the school's on board with all those things, plus. I've got microphone covers, um, all the.
I, I was gonna say, cause I know I was talking to Eileen, and she was telling me all the logistics of it, hand sanitizer. All this stuff, so I just wanted to make sure it sounds like you're well aware and discussion.
We've got masks, we've got hand sanitizers, um, the microphone, we have two microphones. Um, when one person goes up, they put the microphone cover on, they can speak, and then they take it with them, throw it away, well. The other person can go up, and we can sanitize that one, so it's, it'll all process down.
Alright, so where are we having this meeting?
This one's at um, middle school, we got moved to Madland, but not one.
I thought I was.
Where?
Did I?
Run it by me again.
The middle school?
The new middle school.
On Madeline Bennett?
Okay.
It was at the.
Smith's Gym. Yeah, didn't it go to Mashakola?
Yeah.
I think it's at Mashakola.
That's where it was on the floor twenty-six. And then we couldn't have it there, that they have something else there, the floor is down there, so they moved us to the next, to another school.
Oh, so it's back at the middle school? Okay.
I will double check, but I, I'll.
I know, I'm just checking because it, it doesn't seem right to me, I thought we were in the um, Smith's Gym. It should be on the last posting we have on our website, right? That shouldn't change, or if it's not there, then we gotta update the posting, one way or the other.
You know, that's always wrong, right?
That's wrong. Right, right.
Thank you too.
Okay. Um, what's your pleasure on the uh, minutes? Do we wanna try to uh?
I'll do.
Table them?
Yeah, let's table the table, tables.
Alright, let's table that. I don't know if we have a list of action items here. I see a pattern coming. Yeah. Okay, uh, unless there's any pressing old or new business. I don't have anything myself that, that's urgent. So um, superintendent's report?
Just a couple things, if, um, so MVD will be hosting, uh. Uh, part of, uh, it'd be a part of the, uh, the New Hampshire Water Works Construction Field Day on July twenty-ninth. It will have, uh, maybe stops at Wells four and five, uh, well, seven and eight treatment facility. They plan to have a four small groups, you know, four groups of ten rotating around, everybody in their own vehicle, so it should be, uh.
Who, who are the attendees, who are?
Uh, I don't know who they are, it was New Hampshire Water Works Construction Field Day.
Okay, okay.
We've been a part of it in the past, they did seven and eight. Uh. Four years ago, it was a little, it might be, uh, three years ago. Plan to do that again and, uh.
What day was that?
July twenty-ninth. And then, uh, just a quick, uh, so the drillers were out today, drilling crews were out today, uh. At well three area, working on the, uh, two test floor locations there. Um, and we are still working on getting, um, permission from the town to bring to the Watson Park area. That one in there as well, so. Good forward. Alright.
Alright, um, we already did the comments from the press and public, I guess earlier, I hope there's no press. See anybody, um, looking public? Should ask.
So I guess she, she has probably muted herself.
I, I muted her when the messages were going off. I'm gonna shoot the things, so I can see what it says in the blue bubble.
And to.
Is asked to unmute, I think it just needs to unmute.
Appreciate it, Kathy.
I was just saying goodnight, that was it.
No.
Have a great night.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Bye.
So other than that, any last comments other than that, we can, um, entertain motion to adjourn?
Absolutely. Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Ken, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, I appreciate you.